All this meeting to order the Ridgewood Village Council Public Workshop, June 2nd, 2021. The time is 7:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in village hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the record and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by a schedule, including the date, as provided by law, a schedule including a date and time of this meeting. Due to the fact that we continue to meet through a remote meeting format, there were some required announcements to be made and Deputy Mayor Seaton will take it from there.
All right, all participants are muted during this meeting. Anyone wishing to make comments may do so during comments from the public and during the public hearings on any ordinances by dialing star nine on your phones to raise your hand. And then once you're recognized dialing star six on your phones to unmute or raising your hand icon if you're on your computers. You must state your name and address for the record. Members of the public may also submit written comments to us for any future remote meetings by either email to Donna Jackson, Deputy Village Clerk at D Jackson at Ridgewood NJ dot net with the subject line comments for village council meeting or written letter to Donna Jackson Deputy Village Clerk. Written comments must be received by four PM on the day before the remote meeting in order to be read into the record during the meeting. All written comments must adhere to the time limits already set by ordinance. Members of the public commenting during a remote meeting shall not act in any manner to disrupt the meeting. If anyone becomes disruptive during the meeting, they will be muted. If time permits, the disruptive individual shall be allowed to speak after all their members of the public are provided an opportunity to comment. Any continued disruption may result in the member being prevented from speaking during the remainder of this meeting. Disruptive conduct includes but is not limited to shouting interruption and the use of profanity.
Thank you, roll call.
Councilwoman Perrin?
Here.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Seaton?
Here.
Councilwoman Walsh?
Here.
Mayor Knudsen?
Here, please join us for the flag. Great, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and just. Please join us for a moment of silence honoring our men and women serving our nation and our first responders. Thank you, with that we'll go to public comment now to exceed three minutes per person for total of forty minutes. Dylan?
Yes, first person is Mr. And Mrs. Boyd Loving.
Good evening, name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is Ann Loving at 342 South Irving Street. There's two things I just wanted to mention. The first is I was ecstatic this week to receive my sample ballot in the mail and to see our own Michael Seaton on the ballot as a candidate for state senator. He is certainly the most honest, smart, informed man. Well, maybe not the most because there's one sitting next to me too, but one of the most honest, smart, informed men that I know. And I knew of him long before I knew him because my husband and Roger Wigan used to sit at meetings with him when he was a reporter for what was at the time a fantastic newspaper. And they always talked about Mike Seaton. So I am thrilled that he's running for state senator and I wish him the best of luck. The other thing I wanted to comment on is very happy also that we're going to start having in-person meetings, but I'm wondering what would be the harm in allowing people to still call in? The pandemic's not over. There may be some people that do not feel comfortable coming in. And I just am wondering if you could do this by steps and go back to in-person meetings, but still allow the phone calls to come in. The Board of Ed is doing that very successfully. They no longer take the letters or the written emails, but they do allow people to call in. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ann, have a good evening.
All right, next person is Hans Lieberman.
Hans, good evening Hans, just unmute.
Good evening. I have spoken to this council on three occasions now about the issue of misconduct by the present village manager regarding one village, one vote. I won't belabor the issue any longer in this forum, but it occurs to me that for some of you on this council, along with your supporters, had the previous village manager found herself in the same position, you would have raised a you and a cry that would have been heard all over this village. You would have insisted on that manager's dismissal in your loudest voices. Yet in your hypocrisy, you are perfectly willing to take no action against an employee whose actions were deplored by the courts and whose actions are costing the taxpayers of Ridgewood literally tens of thousands of dollars. Could it be that the employee was only acting in the interest of certain members of this council? It begs the question, why would you take any action against your employee when she was only doing your bidding? Tell me, how do you look at yourselves in the mirror every day? Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
All right, next person is Scarpa, please unmute.
And Lynda, name and address for the record.
Scarpa 569 Northern Parkway. Government Code 54954.3 provides that members of the public must be permitted to address the legislative body on any item of interest to the public before or during the body's consideration of that item unless the item has already been considered a previous meeting with an opportunity for comment and subject to reasonable regulations facilitate public comment time limit per speaker to allow more people to speak. This was not done with the defunding EMP plan and hiring two paid firefighters via the budget presentation. I was called out for point of order by mayor because I referenced village manager and fire chief by name and I stopped. At the end of May 26, 2021, public meeting, mayor called me out by name disputing my statements regarding far better transparency and communication with past mayor Aronson in stating she did respond to me while also commenting on Facebook posts. No council member called point of order on the mayor, but should have. It's your, it's your duty to protect the free speech right of all village taxpayers and treat people equal. Sadly, this sends the message that point of order rule is one-sided and stacked against village citizens. Truthfully, I will say the mayor referenced two calls she made and the third was made on May 27th. In all of 2021, in all of the calls, emails and texts, I clearly stated my opinion, which is based on council's actual statements and opened reports. I repeatedly asked proof to show me that the defunding of the EMT and hiring two paid firefighters was the better plan in safety taxes and first responders, but zero information was given on this. The more public a venue is, the less latitude the government has to restrict speech. Restrictions that are content neutral, not tied to particular message will be easier to uphold than restrictions based on a particular viewpoint, which are more often constitutionally suspect, such as calling out my name. The general principle in section 54154 Brown Act provides that the legislative body of a local agency shall not prohibit public criticism of the policy procedures, programs or services of the agency or acts of omission of the legislative body. This particular provision is relevant in that I, the taxpayer, was trying to speak at a meeting as an opponent of a policy. The mayor and the mayor who is a mayor, mayor member of the government body called me out publicly by name and I could not reply in a Zoom format and this violated my freedom to speech. Taxpayers who cannot respond even in a Zoom meeting are restricted in free speech and therefore our First Amendment right is violated in these circumstances. This limitation on speech is not content neutral restriction, but instead is a viewpoint specific restriction on speech and violates not only the Brown Act, but also the First Amendment. I really hope that you all refrain from recalling out taxpayers by name and council people. You should stick up for the citizens, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
All right, next person is Andrew Varaday.
Yeah.
Name and address for the record.
That's Andy Varity, 111 Sherwood Road. I'm going to speak about pickleball tonight. The pickleball controversy should have ended when pickleball conclusively and easily passed the sound test. Since the sound test concluded that pickleball noise levels are clearly within acceptable limits, the noise complaints of the very few Glenn School neighbors has lost all credibility. Thus, there should be absolutely no restrictions on the days or hours of pickleball play. Also, I live in very close proximity to the Willard Schoolyard and the noise levels have increased dramatically over the years with the addition of new playgrounds, new sports being played, new events taking place. But yet, that's something that I and countless other Ridgewood residents who live next to schools have always accepted since the day we purchased our homes. Ridgewood is not a stagnant community and there's always going to be changes made for the sports, the activities and noise levels, schools and recreational facilities. And the neighbors living next to these facilities have accepted this when they purchased their homes next to the schools. Thus, the very small group of complainers living next to the Glenn School must also look as they made the conscious decision to purchase a home next to a school. Finally, it's been a lot of complaints that senior citizens, many in their seventies and I understand a good number in their eighties, who play pickleball are being disadvantaged and discriminated against by limiting pickleball hours and days of older residents, but allowing much younger tennis players unlimited access to the tennis courts. As an attorney, I can state that discrimination does not have to be intentional. Under the disparate impact principle, unintentional discrimination occurs when policies or rules disproportionately have a negative impact on a protected class such as senior citizens. I'm not stating that laws are being violated by the town, but what I am saying is that no town or municipality should set rules that have a discriminatory impact. Further, even the mere appearance that a town or municipality is discriminating against a protected class of its citizens such as older people or people with disability should never be tolerated. Because of the pickleball restrictions, there is a definite perception within Ridgewood and surrounding towns that Ridgewood is adopting policies and rules that clearly disadvantage its senior citizens. And this is embarrassing to me, not only as a Ridgewood resident, but as an attorney. Thus, the much older pickleball players and the much younger tennis players must be treated equally and both must be subject to the exact same days and hours of play. There can be no other solution. Thank you for letting me speak and have a good evening.
Thank you, Andrew, you too. Thank you.
All right, next person is Bob Upton, please unmute.
Good evening, Bob, name and address for the record.
Good evening, Bob Upton, 172 West Glenn Avenue. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to talk again about the West Glenn sidewalk project. Yesterday, I sent an email to the village manager, engineer and also to Councilwoman Reynolds as the CSAC representative and copied it to the other council members, just asking for some clarification of the process for this project. At the council work session on April 28th, Ms. Maylander and Mr. Rudis-Hauser presented a conceptual plan for the West Glenn project, which directly affects my property. In Mr. Rudis-Hauser's presentation, he said that once the council gives direction, the residents will be notified of the plans. So far, we haven't been officially notified. Then at the end of the discussion, Ms. Maylander asked the council to agree that he can go out to the residents with the plan that was presented and all the council agreed. But then Mr. Rudis-Hauser said that he will do so once the resolution is adopted by the council. And I also noticed in the CSAC minutes of the May 20th meeting on this subject, it states, "Council Resolution Supporting The Plan Underway." I do want to say that I am not opposed to the sidewalks, but I do feel the proposed plan can be improved and I think at substantially lesser cost. So as I say, for clarification, I'm asking, what is the specific purpose of the resolution that was mentioned by Mr. Rudis-Hauser and CSAC? Hopefully not to start work, but hopefully to do some investigation. Secondly, what is the, what are the actions that are going to take place and in what sequence? And what role will the council, the engineering department and CSAC play in this process? And in particular, will members of those groups involved familiarize themselves with the proposed location of the project and then meet with the affected residents? Because it was apparent in the previous discussion that the participants had some misconceptions about the, the site and the actual residential properties. So those are my questions. I do have to apologize because I commented in the email that the plan on the website was missing a page and my wife helped me out and we found the second page. So thank you all.
Thank you, Bob, have a good evening.
All right, next person is Siobhan Winograd, please unmute.
Hi, Siobhan Kram, Winograd, 274 Ivy Place. I'm calling because I wanted to speak to the pickleball issue. I've been following it a bit simply because in January, when the bike lock was placed on the gate, you know, because I grew up here and a lot of the pickleballers are friends and neighbors from my childhood, there were a lot of discussions that questioned authority and scope of that decision. And then there were follow-up conversations on how to advocate for the sport that they love and they wanted to play. I feel that, you know, the restricted hours are out of hand. I think it's basically Parks and Rec sells it on the same badge. It is the same as tennis and it just seems very heavy-handed, particularly against a sport that's comprised mostly of seniors. When this first happened, you know, clearly I live in a multi-generational house and my kids have been in parks throughout COVID and the boys in particular have dominated the basketball courts. I'm sure it's been annoying for the people who live next to GW School. I know other towns took steps and took down basketball hoops and discouraged the kids from playing. And I think our town and the Board of Ed recognized that these kids needed a reprieve. They needed to an outlet and sports and being outside was a great way. And I don't think you guys are realizing that for the seniors. I think that this has gotten a little out of control from the outside. You know, some examples of where I think the conversation has failed is that the original steps to restrict usage based on residency was good in terms of the numbers. But then before the sound study even came back, you introduced a second ordinance. And for me, that just didn't seem like a very strong commitment to the conversation. I really feel that for years, this has been viewed as the same sport. Pickleball is from a management standpoint, not from the sports standpoint. And I think this council needs to recognize that phrases like aging in place and commitment to seniors needs to be met with action. And I feel somewhat strongly that the hours should go back and we should do everything we can as this pandemic goes into its second summer to encourage our seniors to use the park the way the Board of Ed has allowed our kids to use theirs. Thanks.
Thank you, Siobhan, have a good evening.
And that was the last one.
Okay, so we're going to close the call in comments and Donna, you have roughly, let me just check our clock, hang on. So why don't we do those? It looks like we have some time to get those wrapped.
The first that I'll read is the summarization of a dozen or so emails. And I'll read you the names and addresses of the people that sent these in. And then I took points from all of their emails, which were very similar in their comments. So I took some of their comments and put them all together. Joanne Archer, 241 West End Avenue, Kathleen Azara, 955 Hillcrest Road, Monica Bangash, 165 McKinley Place, Lynn and Bob Byrne, 180 Lincoln Avenue, Dolores DeAndrea, 106 Pine Street, Scott Feld, 530 Jim Coe Place, Carolina Franco Rosen, 85A Wickham Way, Mark Harris, 243 Pure Soul Way, Jeff Pleischer, 146 South Bandine Avenue, Lynn Portland, 747 Newcombe Road, Dwayne Rodney, 125 South Maple Avenue, Jean Solomon, 648 Spring Avenue, Kim Wong, 223 Orchard Place. They mentioned that the residents that play pickleball at Glenn School love it, follow the rules and it's a means of socialization, physical activity, mostly for the senior population. They, the noise complaints are from, they believe are from a few residents forcing a lot of changes. They believe that living in the proximity of a school, field or park should make you aware of the noise that comes along with living in that residential area. And they'd like to know how the noise from pickleball differs from the noise of a bouncing basketball, the hitting of a baseball, the cheering of crowds or music of a marching band. They believe that the muted balls, green paddles, sound deadening, the sound test that was at an acceptable level have been a lot of accommodations to satisfy the complaints of a few. They would like to know why there's a discrepancy between the rules for pickleball and tennis. They would like the courts open for more hours. The, they believe the 10 AM start is not reasonable for seniors as they would be playing during the heat of midday. They suggest the hours, a few of them suggest the hours of eight or nine AM to seven PM, seven days a week, and people who work need hours to include them as well. One person suggested programs for new players and possibly those with special needs. So these were all similar thoughts in many of those messages.
Thank you.
Now I have four other letters that I'd like to read. And these had some different thoughts and that's why I pulled these aside. The first is from Alan Metzler, 106 Pine Street. I'm writing to the mayor and council with the hope that both sides realize an amicable solution to the issues raised about pickleball. I follow this issue and the more I look into it, the less it makes any sense. The village spent the money to build a fantastic pickleball facility. The tennis courts that had fallen into total neglect were being used again for pickleball. COVID came and the courts were used by people who were now unemployed or underemployed. The courts provided a much-needed social gathering location as well as a way to exercise, contributing to the physical as well as the emotional health of the participants. Then in a surprising arbitrary action, the courts were closed. Some say it was the noise. Tests showed no excessive noise. Of course, we reopen with new hours, new equipment regulations. The town invested in sound barriers, all this to placate the chronic complainers in that area. A monitor to watch pickleball players was assigned, no such monitor at the tennis courts. Because this is a comment-only portion of the meeting and no true question and answer period exists, it is hard to understand the actions of the village mayor and council. A true question and answer session would clear up a great deal of the confusion. One question might be, if only four balls can be in a play at any given time, why would it matter how many people are at the courts? Another question needing an answer would be, does charging seniors to use the courts make the courts quieter? A really interesting question is, why did the mayor and council force mostly senior citizens to play in the heat of the day and deny students and working, working people use of the courts because of the limited hours? Tennis has no limitations. My favorite and one I've been asking since the mayor during the meeting decided to disregard the recommendations with the wave of her hand shortened Sunday's hours. I would ask, is the mayor that biased against pickleball or has she aligned herself with the complainer and is no longer neutral in her decision-making? As of now, the mayor and council sit disinterested as the comments are read. Your body language speaks volumes as we see it on Zoom. After each reading, there's the patent, thank you for your comment from the mayor and nothing happens. It's time to resolve an issue that has taken up far too much time. Open the courts on a par with tennis. Allow the entire community access, access to the courts, eight to dusk, seven days a week. Thank you. The next is from Jack in MC Ben and Tandy, 459 Fairway Road. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the US because it appeals to the aging population for obvious health and general enjoyment reasons. When the cross was emerging and last day conflicted with the baseball parade, the Ridgewood community found a way to become a powerhouse in both sports, winning multiple championships. Similarly, pickleball has many professional players and even has a US Open championship event. We have had award-winning players on our courts that now play elsewhere because Ridgewood is so unwelcoming. The town thrives on competition. Why are we moving backwards with this activity? I moved my family into town because it offers so many opportunities. This is not the town I've known for the last 27 years. You're limiting play for what reason? Please remove the locks and allow the residents to enjoy all that Ridgewood has to offer. This is from Downhill Lou, 959 Barnes Drive. By many popular accounts, pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the US today. Just do an internet search on how fast is pickleball growing? Seniors, some having previously played similar sports like tennis or squash have taken to the sport like ducks to water. I began my pickleball career at Glenn School last year and literally met dozens of players of all age groups, many of whom I now consider to be friends. Like the game of bridge, pickleball is a great way to meet new people and make new friendships while staying as physically active as possible. A casual observer of pickleball play at Glenn School will see over time players of all ages, from pre-teens to seniors. It's an easy game to learn and play and it allows grandparents to be competitive with their college-age grandchildren. Last year, the schedule for the Glenn School pickleball course was the same as the schedule for the tennis course. Currently, the hours of operation for these courts have been severely curtailed. This greatly discourages play and discriminates against seniors in particular, as seniors have more flexibility time-wise than other age groups, but also have greatly reduced physical capability compared to younger age groups. As one of these seniors, I strongly urge the powers-to-be to restore Glenn School courts availability to the same schedule that is applied to Ridgewood tennis courts. Ridgewood seniors will thank you for it. And the next is enough is enough, please stop the madness. The Glenn Pickleball Courts must be opened on the same days, at the same times as the tennis courts in town. We pay the same amount of money to play pickleball as this, as the tennis badge holders and we are provided with only 40% of the court time. The mission statement of the Ridgewood Department of Parks and Recreation is to preserve open space and provide facilities and year-round recreational activities that meet the needs of all residents. The above mission statement also includes residents who work in offices and commute. Unfortunately, that only allows we working residents Saturdays and Sundays to play pickleball, which can be challenging with busy family lives. So why is this the case? Because there are a few residents in the surrounding neighborhood who don't like to hear any incremental noise beyond what they've been subjected to over the years with the sports fields at the Glenn School and Route 17 traffic noise. We're all subject to some type of annoying noises throughout the town. Why is this neighborhood any different? We understand that, understand that a noise study was performed and it was found to be below NJ standard, NJ State standards. So we respectfully ask that the pickleball course be reopened without restrictions and that you end this ridiculous charade. And that's from Dan and Kelly Goya, 447 Fairway Road. And that's all of my letters.
Okay, um, you know, just a couple of thoughts on this. The first, Heather, did we, did we do to Bob Upton's question, did we do a resolution? And what is the current status of outreach to the neighbors? Do you know?
I'm gonna have to have Chris answer that. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, real quick, so we get that matter resolved.
Chris? If he's there. Okay, okay.
Hello.
Sorry.
What's up?
The West Glenn sidewalks, where are we? I thought we did do a resolution and.
I did a resolution. I haven't found it in the completed resolution packet. I gotta go look it through it again. I was having some problems with the PDF on my computer system, but Dylan did correct that, so now I should have an easier time searching for it.
Okay.
To the neighbors, what is the status on the outreach to the folks that are impacted? Because we said we would do that.
Um, we haven't gotten any further in our design process. The only thing we've done is recently, we submitted our concept plan to Bergen County and I got some review comments from the Assistant County Engineer and we're looking at those and looking to see how we can address them.
So as far as Bob goes, we're still in the, Mr. Upton, we're still in the design phase before we're going out to, to the public to have that conversation? Is that where we're at?
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna tighten up the conceptual plans because they're more broad brush for the whole street section that we're doing from Monroe down to Hillcrest. For the whole street section that we're doing from Monroe down to Hillcrest. Like I said, we'll, we wanna take a look at the county's comments and see what we have to do to start to address some of those.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, and, and then just to the comments about saying people's names when they call in to comment. Is two different things that we're, you know, kind of mixing here. But it's important to note that oftentimes members of the public call in and they're looking for a response. And in a particular discussion was about the lack of a response. And so I thought it was relevant to, to um, make it clear that there was a response. So um, and, and as far as pickleball though, I just want everyone to know there's nobody on this council. That is discriminating against anyone under any circumstances. I, I think it's just unfair to, to um, make that suggestion. It's simply not what this is about. This is about a disruption that, that we created to the neighbors and we're just trying to strike a balance and get it right. So it's not the, the path of least resistance for all of us and the easiest. Out would be just to say, oh, you know, well, the hour is reinstated, but I, it's a, it's a tough decision. So I just want to make that clear.
Susan, uh, excuse me, mayor, uh, could, could I ask the village attorney to clarify for the public? Um, why they are not supposed to use people's names during public comment or, and, and. Um, what other limitations there are in using people's names?
So I guess that's just our decorum, our, our decorum. Um, Matt, if you want to just go over that, it's a great suggestion. Thank you, councilman.
Yeah, the, the, we have an ordinance or we have ordinances that deal with decorum and demeanor at, at council meetings. And I think anybody who is this, you know, determined to be disruptive or is. Um, perceived as being disruptive of the council meeting and preventing either business from being done, being argumentative, using bad language. Making threats and that type of thing. That kind of behavior and public comment is restricting. Um, my opinion is that people can say names of council members. And say that, you know, I don't agree with your vote on this particular issue or I don't agree with this or that that was done. But accusing people of, of theft, accusing people of ethical violations. Accusing, um, you know, individuals and naming them and saying you, you know, you're unethical and you're making accusations like that. That type of demeanor during the meetings can be restricted. So um, that's my interpretation of the, not only our ordinances, but the conduct that's permitted at a public meeting. And the ability of the council to restrict comment. But um, it's really most, mostly about demeanor and the, the approach to the issues that are discussed, so.
And I do want to point out that in that um, initial comment, it was also suggested that we prohibited. Individuals from participating in uh, the conversation. And I think that nothing could be further from the truth. We had um, public hearings, we had very, I, I think a month of worth of um. Uh, meetings, several meetings throughout the month of February for the budget process. There's public comment before and after every meeting. Uh, there were public hearings, there were public comment before and after the March tenth meeting when the budget was um, set for a public hearing. There was a public hearing. So I, I don't think that any member of the public could reasonably claim that they were prohibited from participation. May not agree with, with the approach that the council took, but I don't, I think it would be unfair to make that statement as well, so.
Well, um, I, I disagree in part because. When people don't have budget documents, you might as well be listening to a foreign language.
So in, a, a, and you know what Pam, honestly, what I'll say is that, you know, for some of us that have been doing budgets for a zillion years and, and, you know, since two thousand fourteen. But for Councilwoman Walsh, actually, two thousand eight, ten, ten, okay. So for this budget process is the most transparent um, ever and, and. Prior to the sunshine binders, there were no budget documents that were part of, there were no documents that were provided for any meetings. This in particular, um, budget process was a little bit different due to Zoom, due to Covid. And you know, we're in a pandemic or we're, you know, in the height of it. And I, I think that that's unfair to even suggest that because everything is discussed, everything is open. And, and there's certainly opportunity for people to review documents. So I, I just disagree and I think it's unfair once again to say that people didn't have an opportunity to participate because they most certainly did. Um, with that, we will uh, go on to the manager's report.
We'd like to invite everyone to join us for an exciting event. Celebrating one hundred years of water provision by Ridgewood Water. To the communities of Glen Rock, Midland Park, Ridgewood and Wyckoff. It will be held on June eighth, rain date of June ninth at Grayden Pool. From noon to two PM, lunch will be provided and we look forward to seeing all of you join our celebration. I just want to remind you that Glenwood Road Hill is closed to vehicular traffic. New Jersey Department of Transportation and New Jersey Transit are improving the railroad track crossing at the Hohokis train station. The stairs and the train tracks are accessible during closure as well as the pedestrian crossing at the middle of the tracks. Um, the closure will last until about mid-June and then when Glenwood Road reopens, it will be a one way street down the hill. The primary election will take place on June eighth with the in-person polling locations from six AM to eight PM. Polling locations are on the sample ballots. The polling places for Hawes and Travell Schools have been moved from the cafeterias in those schools to the gyms. Due to the fact that cafeterias are used as classroom space. Entries to, to the locations by the gyms will have signs indicating voters enter here. Masks and social distancing will be required in all polling places since they are located in public schools and in the library. Village offices open to the public yesterday. Masks are required in all village buildings and social distancing is encouraged. We respectfully request that you limit your in-person visit to village offices to doing business with village departments. Or attending a scheduled class, meeting or event. Um, village council meetings will resume meeting in person next Wednesday, June ninth. Was a public meeting which begins at eight PM. The planning board zoning board of adjustment meetings will resume meeting in person in July. Once the village council and planning board zoning board of adjustment meeting. Meet in persons and meetings will stop, there will be no follow up comments from the public. And no written comments from the public will be accepted. Residents can always email those council members with any comments or concerns they may have. Ridgewood Parks and Recreation has a summer day camp from June twenty ninth to August sixth. In addition, there will be some August mini camps including tennis, camping with arts, multi-sports. Animation flicks with incredible flicks, skateboarding, lacrosse, super science mashup. Built by me computer camp and extreme summer steam with education. A complete list of camps with descriptions can be found at ridgewoodnj.net slash recreation. The Cashew Memorial Shell presents free concerts with the band Shell on Veterans Field. Every Tuesday and Thursday evening in June, July and through August eighth at eight thirty PM. Please bring a chair or blanket to enjoy the music. Uh, the senior bus will be available some Thursdays um, by reservation. For the, those seniors who would like to take a bus instead of drive to the Cashew Shell. Um, I do just want to mention again, all residential parking regulations are being enforced. Including no overnight parking on streets from two AM to six AM. There are still twenty-four hour parking spaces available in the train station lot and cottage place lot. Um, through July thirty first. Overnight parking in the central business district is open to all rigid residents. Um, I want to let you know that um, if you have family or friends who uh, live in the area in other towns. Um, we are offering our rigid parking permits for commuters at um, resident prices for the rest of twenty twenty-one. Um, CBD employees are now parking exclusively on the fourth floor of the Hudson Street Garage. They must have a CBD employee sticker to do so. All non-premium parking permit holders are now parking on the third floor of the Hudson Street Garage. Grayton Pool membership is now open on community pass. The pool season runs from this coming Saturday, June fifth through Monday, uh, September sixth, which is Labor Day. Uh, please call the recreation department, two oh one six seven zero five five six zero if you have any questions. Grayton Pool informational breakfast for older adults will take place this Saturday, June fifth from ten thirty AM to noon. Um, we ask that you come and see, uh, enjoy wrap breakfast, live music and learn all that Grayton Pool and Park have to offer. Registration is required, please email Deanna Shablik, dshablik@ridgewoodnj.net. Or call her at two oh one six seven zero five five zero zero, extension three zero one. A pride celebration will be held at Memorial Park of Vanas Square on June fifth, beginning at two PM. Uh, the pedestrian plaza where East Ridgewood Avenue is closed to vehicular traffic from Oak Street to Broad Street all day and night on Saturdays and Sundays. Will take place from July tenth through September fifth. There will be dining and shopping areas on the street for more many eateries and businesses. There will be a touch and truck event with public safety vehicles on July tenth on the west side. And then August twenty first on the east side from noon to three PM. Music in the night sponsored by the Ridgewood Guild is taking place at various locations in the central business district on Friday nights through September. Music and laughter will be in Memorial Park of Vanas Square beginning this Saturday, uh, June fifth. Um, comedy acts begin at seven thirty PM to eight PM and bands performing each week will begin at eight PM. There will also be other various performances throughout pedestrian plaza on Saturdays and Sundays once that begins um, on July tenth. Bergen County Utilities Authority, um, you need proof of Bergen County residency. Uh, they, but they are having a household hazardous waste collection. Will be held on Sunday, June thirteenth, nine AM to three PM at Bergen Community College, which is on Paramus Road. They will collect aerosol cans, antifreeze, blacktop sealers, fire extinguishers, fluorescent bulbs, gasoline herbicides. Propane gas cylinders and used motor oil. There will also be a recycling event on June fifth at Bergen County Camp Law Mountain Reservation, two hundred Camp Law Road in Mawa. Nine AM to two PM, disposable electronics and computers. Tire recycling, unwanted medication and also discard, um, you can have paper shredding there. Um, four boxes maximum and shredding ends when the truck is full. I want to let you know that two hundred and ten new trees have been planted in front of homes. And letters with instructions and suggestions for care of these trees have been given to each homeowner. New trees have a far better chance of succeeding if they have someone looking after them. Please make sure that if you receive a new tree that it receives enough water to help it grow. If you maintain your tree well, it will provide many benefits and many years of growth. Uh, we have village council upcoming meetings that broadcast live on the village website and channel thirty-four on bios. They're also available after the meeting um, on YouTube. Um, June ninth, village council public meeting begins at eight PM. June twenty-third, village council work session at seven thirty PM. July seventh, village council public work session at seven thirty PM. And July fourteenth, village council public meeting at eight PM. That's all I have.
That was a lot, okay, Councilwoman Perrin.
Thank you, mayor. Green Ridgewood has not met since our last meeting, however, uh, they are sponsoring. An, an arts amble on the Dunham Trail on Friday, June eleventh at five o'clock to seven o'clock. Um, Art of Motion will be performing and we will end at the Rose, uh, James Rose House on, on Ridgewood Avenue. Um, let's see, uh, the Central Bus- Business District Advisory Council. Um, uh, one of our members, Steve Spuro, has agreed to serve as co-chairman of the committee along with Jordan Kaufman. Um, at our meeting last week, we talked about the murals that are popping up downtown. Um, those are really beautiful. Uh, I think there are more to come. I'm not going to tell you where they are, you could go look for them because that's part of the fun. Um. And I believe that's sponsored by the Ridgewood Arts Council. Um, and then um, our chief of police brought up that we should be publicizing our wonderful downtown. Um, more broadly. And one of our members, one of our visitors came up with the idea of putting it, our town in TripAdvisor. So we're looking into that, that could really give us a broad reach. Um, we also discuss, discussed pop-up stores and what they mean for our economy and um. Well, some, it can mean some negative things, but we thought that a good use would be for artwork. Um, if artwork is incorporated, pop-ups could be, could be a, a good way to fill empty storefronts. Um, we've been meeting twice a month during the pandemic because of all the stress that the merchants are under. And, and all the changing regulations and all. But uh, now that we can congregate a little bit more, uh, we have decided to meet once a month. And that is the second Thursday of the month at eight thirty AM. And I believe we'll be meeting sometimes remotely, sometimes in person. Um, we have two openings coming up. If people would like to apply, um, the applications for volunteers will be out soon, end of June maybe. Um, we have one resident opening and one business owner opening. And then uh, as to the Chamber of Commerce, which I'm also liaison to, they have not met, but they are wrapping up their ninety days. Of uh, Feed the Frontlines, a stupendous effort. Um, of caring and collaboration, they have now served a hundred thousand meals to needy people. Um, all supplied by Ridgewood Restaurants, so that's just been an amazing endeavor. Um, and then let's see, as to open space, well, we have our, our speaker here tonight, so I don't want to steal her thunder. But I will say that uh, as part of the open space um, uh, pro- committee. I'm going to be giving a talk on June twelfth at Looning Park, that's the corner of Northern Parkway and Meadowbrook. Um, I'll be talking about the various kinds of trees you can see there and we'll probably. Then mosey over to the community gardens to see what's growing and perhaps end up in the butterfly garden. That's June twelfth, Saturday at ten AM. And then our chairperson, um, Ralph Curry will be giving a talk on June twenty-sixth and a tour of Twenty Pond. And that's Saturday, June twenty-sixth at ten AM and we'll meet at the uh, cul-de-sac on Red Birch. And that's all I have.
That was a lot too, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Reynolds?
Thank you, mayor, I don't have much. Uh, since last week, I was only gonna have one meeting, the planning board last night and that was canceled. So our next planning war meeting is June fifteen. But I just wanted to say uh, a shout out and a thank you to Bob Paoli. Um, who is the commander of the Ridgewood American Legion. They had a wonderful Memorial Day service on Monday. And all of the speakers, the Ridgewood High School Wind Ensemble, they had, um, they were in particular, what I found. Beautiful, there were three young men from the high school who sang the Armed Forces Salute. I thought that was spectacular and really it was just a beautiful ceremony. It was very well attended, I think there were a lot of people there and uh, shout out to anybody that helped. Um, get this together and whoever presented and spoke, it was a really, really nice service. Thank you, that's it.
Councilwoman Walsh? So Heather pretty much hit everything that I had to report on and I will echo what Councilwoman Reynolds said about the Memorial Day service. It was great, those three young men singing, I, I think that was the first year that they sang with the music accompaniment and it was spectacular. So that's all I have. Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor?
Uh, thank you, mayor. The um, Community Center Advisory Board met last week and um, some um, Ridgewood senior citizens for the um, for Older Americans Month last month. Uh, engaged in a project called uh, Communities of Stre- uh, for uh, uh, project, the, the theme of the month was Communities of Strength. And the uh, project was uh, Resilience Rocks. And they took uh, river rocks and painted them to um, put together and look like an American flag. So that's gonna, I believe that's going to be displayed in the plaza next to Village Hall. And there is going to be a um, uh, sort of a small Flag Day event on June fourteenth. To um, commemorate the um, the endeavor and to kind of show off um, what, what our, our older, um, older residents did for, for the uh, community. And then um, the Arts Council met last night and um, they're planning, uh, I believe it's a um, an arts fair. Of some kind for the fall, so it's really in its infancy. Um, the council has to decide where um, you know, the location, the theme and some of the things we're going to do. But you know, it's a creative bunch and it seems like it's going to be pretty exciting and there's been a lot of good ideas flying around so far. So as that develops, there will be more on that. And there's been a lot of good ideas flying around so far. So as that develops, there will be more on that and, um. That's it. That's everything I have.
Thank you. Uh, so I don't have much. I just wanted to reiterate, um. Saturday, June fifth, two P M. Come celebrate with us, Ridgewood Pride twenty twenty one. So I just want to say this has really, um, been. Tremendous community effort and is truly a community celebration. Um, members of our community will be there to speak. Uh, there will be, um, songs, um, commentary. And it's, it's really truly a celebration. So we hope everyone will join us, uh, June fifth, two P M. And if anyone gets the chance to see the, um, poster, the ad that went out, I don't know if I'm going to try and show it on my phone. I don't know that that always works, but. Uh, this is a creation by our Ridgewood High School students. The artwork was done by them and it's just absolutely beautiful. So it's a really terrific job. And we look forward to seeing everyone there. Um. The, uh, planning war meeting, uh, was canceled item. I know there was a lot of interest in, uh, one of the applications. I believe it's three fifteen. East Glen, is that the, okay, so the task goes application three fifteen East Glen. That was carried to June fifteenth, uh, was a technical issue with some materials that weren't delivered on time. So that's important. And we also carried the, uh, six foot fence conversation to that. June fifteenth meeting as well. Um, and I think that's all I have. And so with that, I guess we will bring in. Uh, Barbara Heskins Davies, um, Heather, do you want to bring Barbara in? And she can give us a little bit of information and then proceed to do her presentation, which I've already had the opportunity to, um, see, but. I'm thrilled to watch again.
So I just wanted to give a little background, which council received and just for the public. Um, November of two thousand and one, Ridgewood residents voted to approve a half cent tax. For a hundred dollars of a set property value to fund the preservation and acquisition of open space in the village. Um, we, uh, created an open space and recreation plan. Um, and the most recent update was July first, two thousand and ten. Um, in order to be followed by grant funding, the plan must be current within, uh, ten years. So Barbara Heskins Davis, who is here tonight, will tell us about that. Um, she is the Vice President of Programs at the Land Conservancy of New Jersey. Which is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to preserve and manage land for open space and recreation in New Jersey. Uh, the Conservancy's municipal services includes writing an open space plan and, um. The village can use funds from our open space trust fund to pay for this service. Um, so I'll turn it over to both Councilwoman Perrin, who's our liaison to open space and Barbara Heskins Davis.
Um, is part of the open space committee's mission to create, to see that there is a current open space plan. That, um, that, uh, dovetails with the, the village's master plan and to that. And several of us on the committee went to a trainings webinar and, uh, Barbara Heskins Davis was one of the speakers. And we were so impressed that we had her come to speak to us and to the planning board subcommittee on the mass, that's working on the master plan. And, um, uh, her group has done about ninety, um, open space plans. And TNEC is one of them and, um, there are many aspects to the plan. She has also already done, oh, well, her group has. Um, written the village's flood acquisition plan. So Barbara is not new to our, our village. She has some background already. And now I'll turn it over to her.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you, Mayor. And counsel for, um, having the land conservancy, um, present at your meeting tonight. Um, if it's all right, I'd like to share my screen so that way you can see the presentation. So if you could just tell me if you can see my screen? Mm-hmm. I'm good.
Yes.
Oh, always good when I do it right. So the Land Conservancy of New Jersey is a nonprofit land trust. We're based in Booton in Morris County. Um, as the councilwoman said, I have done work in the village of Ridgewood. Um, actually, just about a year ago, we worked with Heather. And Chris on your, um, flood acquisition plan, which is a requirement for entry into the county's flood acquisition program. So you can help mitigate the, um, impact of storms on your residents. So I was contacted by Ridgewood to talk to the open space committee about updating your open space and recreation plan. Um, so this is just a little bit about the land conservancy, but I'm going to, you know, move forward. The Land Conservancy does open space and recreations plan as part of our municipal services program. We're a mission driven organization. I've been there twenty-two years. I'm a licensed planner. Um, as the councilwoman said, we've written ninety open space and recreation plans, but altogether we've done about a hundred and seventy. Land conservation plans. We only do plans, um, that are conservation based. I don't write master plans or zoning ordinances. We write plans that will enable municipalities to access greater funding for preservation. And as I mentioned, we did your flood acquisition plan specifically for this purpose, um, so that the village could access funding from Bergen County. To help, um, mitigate the impact from, uh, storms in the village. So why do open space and recreation plans? Um, I'm going to tell you very simply, I think it's two reasons. It makes it less expensive for the village to preserve land. For recreation and open space. For, one reason is because you're proactive. You're looking at properties ahead of time and you're identifying them now rather than when they're up for development and become more expensive. And two, most importantly, it qualifies you for enhanced funding from the state of New Jersey. Green Acres has a program, um, for land acquisition. There's two different kinds. There's site specific. And there's the planning incentive. The planning incentive program, um, award, rewards towns that collect an open space trust fund, which Ridgewood Village does. And has a current open space and recreation plan. The application becomes your open space and recreation plan. So if I lived in Ridgewood and I wanted to sell my property and you wanted to purchase it for a new park. You would apply to Green Acres through the planning incentive program and receive funding for my property. But if you did not have a current open space plan or did not have an open space trust fund. And you went through the site specific program to acquire my property. The application is extensive. It can be upwards of sixty pages. It's competitive. You rank statewide. Um, and when you do get funding, it's typically less than what's in the planning incentive program. And if the landowner, myself, changed my mind and decided not to sell it to Ridgewood. Not only would you lose the property, you'd lose the funding because it was tied to my property. Whereas in the planning incentive program, you would just reallocate that funding to any other property that you had identified as locally important. The planning incentive program, um, awards funding right now about once every two years. So the application deadline is at the end of this month. And I did speak to the open space committee about that because your plan is two thousand and ten. You would qualify this year, but if you wanted to apply, if they had a funding round next year or in two years. You would no longer qualify. You would have to update your open space and recreation plan. Another thing I want to make sure that the council is aware of, um, is that Green Acres announced a brand new program this spring. Called Urban Parks Projects for Eligible Communities. Governor Murphy had enacted legislation to recognize, um, the need for environmental justice. For those census tracts that have, um, a majority of low income or highly diverse communities. And Ridgewood Village does have census tracts that fall within that program. Um, so they've made available five hundred thousand dollar grants, no match required. Um, for these communities for the park development or land acquisition projects. The application is due at the end of the month. They're highly competitive. Um, I think they're only going to award five grant applications. Um, we did one for one of our towns. And to be quite honest, I'm not sure how competitive they're going to be, but it's good to apply and, um, and show that there's a need for the program. So the village should keep an eye on that funding source and keep an eye on opportunities. My recommendation is that you look at the data and see what census track has been identified as being part of that overburdened community list. Um, so that if there are projects and your open space plan really should address this when you update it. You can direct projects to that if they're appropriate for the municipality. So the plan, I'm going to run through this fairly quickly, has a series of sections. Remember, it's an update. It's not a redo. So you're going to look at the goals for the program, make sure they work. And again, I really want you to look at that overburdened, um, communities information. It's going to be a public document. Green Acres requires two public meetings. It's going to give you kind of an audit of your open space trust fund. If you Google, um, TNEC's Open Space and Recreation Plan, it's on their website. And you can see, we did a pretty extensive study of their open space trust fund because it was complicated. And there were a lot of questions about how it was spent. And then we do some mapping to tell you what's preserved and what's out there. So this is, um, Madison's, um, open space map. You can see that we've identified. Drew University and Madison High School and some of the parks to give you an idea of kind of where things are and where they fall. We give recommendations about what should be preserved and why. Um, some of the more rural towns we work with. Are, um, more focused on farmland preservation than open space. So when we do an open space plan, we really talk a lot about the community benefits of open space. I know I'm va, very idealistic. I think sometimes in my field you have to be. And, um, I'm going to hope that one of the pluses of the pandemic. Is that, um, it was the outdoors that allowed people to reconnect and actually to feel safe. And I'm hoping that that lasts and, um, people continue to support the expansion and the utilization of our park system. Because it really was necessary. And Green Acres requires an action plan, kind of a short midterm and longer term action plan. Um, and we provide this. So it's kind of a roadmap for the open space committee to know what they're doing and, you know, what they should be looking at and they would revisit that. We have a staff of, um, thirteen staff members, um, and I employ somewhere between three to six interns per year. They're all graduate students. I have three now. That are all have their masters. Um, and with the pandemic, I see another benefit. Again, I'm a rose colored glass sort of woman. Um, I can hire interns from anywhere. So I have a graduate student from University of Arizona. Who's sharp as a tack and the advantage there is he works till eight o'clock our time. So if you have a question, he's on the computer. It's a great thing. Um, so it's a good group and they're very smart. And this is my contact information. Um, you know, I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to answer questions. I did provide a proposal to the council. About updating your open space plan. The open space committee had asked that I include, um, an extra. You know, item in there about prioritizing land and doing kind of a priority analysis. And I'm happy to, to do that or talk with the committee further. So with that, I'm going to stop my screen share. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the council about updating your open space plan and what the land conservancy can do. So thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Thanks so much. Um, I just actually have one quick question and I, I believe I raised it, uh, during the open space meeting. On the, um. Land acquisition project and the overburdened community grant program. Presently, we can't do that, um, even though we have our open space taxes. One of the things we discussed that we had. Uh, the village council had talked about, uh, possibly suspending our open space tax for the one year due to the, um, impact of COVID. Um, however, just in terms of those two grant opportunities, I believe, oh. It's the, uh, planning incentive program, right? So I just. We're not eligible to do that right now because of our diversion. Is, is that correct?
Don't worry about your diversion. So I, I know you have a diversion. Um, I did hear, you know, some of the details at the committee meeting. You can always apply. It's just that they're not going to award you the funding until the diversion is resolved. So we were with a lot of towns that applied for funding, have a problem with their recreation, open space inventory. They work to resolve it and then the funding is released. And I understand it can go on for quite some time.
So what you're saying is that they would award the grant, but just withhold the funding?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's a little bit different than I understood. Okay, good. All right. I'm good now. Go ahead.
Okay, good.
And does anyone have any questions for Barbara?
Yeah, uh, it's since it, it sounds like we're going to have to do it anyway. How much, uh, what, what is the, the cost of, um, to, to redo the plan or to update the plan? I guess if you're not starting, starting over completely.
So, um, the fee that I provide to the municipalities between twelve and I believe fifteen. Um, depending on whether you want the additional work for the open space plan update. And as Heather said, um, our fee can be paid for through your open space trust fund. It's an allowable use of the trust fund.
And I also saw that you do, um, resource inventories, so during, um, you know, do you have any thoughts on how that might work for Ridgewood? Because it's been something that we've been kicking around for a while on, um, some of our, our environmental committees.
So I'm a big proponent of the environmental resource inventories and I'm going to give you a couple of reasons why. Um, number one, I think it's a great tool for your planning board and for your environmental commission. Um, it uses current data. Um, the maps are easier to use than they used to be. And it gives you kind of a first cut for what's, what you're looking at if a development application comes in. So that's big reason, number one. Big reason, number two, um, is that it's really helpful for grant applications. So again, if you, you know, channel your inner Barbara and you're, you're a rose colored glass sort of person. You are going to be applying for funding to either acquire land or to improve your recreational facilities. Or to do better stewardship of your open space. And having an environmental resource inventory that gives you the reasons why, based on your natural features. Will be a great tool for the municipality and writing strong grant applications. The third reason is that, um, I believe Ridgewood is in the Sustainable Jersey Program. And having an environmental resource inventory, um, is considered a priority action through Sustainable Jersey and will yield twenty points. Doing an open space plan update is, um, also a certification action through Sustainable Jersey and will give you ten points.
Well, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I have a question. Um, you, you mentioned, you mentioned the census tract. So if, if, um. The, the different areas within Ridgewood that would be applicable to those census tract, would anything that would, would have to be done, their development would have to be done. In that census tract within the village. Is that, I guess?
So that's a really good question. Um, my guess is yes. But the D E P didn't say that. They just said that the municipality is part of this. Program because you have a census tract that's been identified as overburdened. So, um, the application that we worked on, the project is not in the census tract, but it's accessible to the census tract. So that's why I think, um. If you update your open space and recreation plan, you should really include that layer. So that you're operating from a point of knowledge and you do some really good, hard look at. The land conservancy has been hired by Bergen County to update its open space and recreation plan. We're just at the beginning steps of it. And that's going to be a big part of the analysis. When they did their strategic parks plan in two thousand and nineteen with Rutgers. They did do a pretty good study of where park needs are. And we're going to overlay that with the overburdened communities data, which should give the county a lot of good information. And it would be interesting to see how Ridgewood falls in there.
Yeah, thank you. So I have just a quick question, Barbara. When did you, what was the deadline on the overburdened community grant?
Yeah, it's June, um, June fifteenth. So, you know, that's just not going to work. Um, that's why I'm, I wouldn't even worry about it to tell you the truth because it's so competitive and, um. You know, let the first year go, get prepared, get a good project. And then when they, they're going to do it again because this is a priority for the governor. You'll be ready and have a great application to submit at that time.
Yeah, and I only, I think that, uh, Councilwoman Perrin and I reviewed all that documentation together and our interpretation was it had to be in that. Base that was designated. And so we, I think at the time went like, okay, we qualify. It's okay, we'll take. Get it right, Pam?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'm not the D E P. So I'm doing the best, you know, interpretation that I have as well. So, you know, that's all good. Um, Council, Councilwoman Reynolds?
Thanks, Barbara. Um, so just with these, um, grant applications. Do you recommend or are there like specific people that are very knowledgeable with the open space grants? Like is it? Does it make sense to have an open space grant writer or? You know, can anybody? Or, you know, can anybody write the grant?
Okay. So I'm gonna give you a very honest answer. If you do your open space plan update, your open space plan is the application for the planning incentive program. So it, application is super easy. The urban parks grant that the mayor is referring to, that she and Pamela looked at, was very difficult to do. And it required engineering, our staff worked on it, we're professionals at this. If you do a site specific application with Green Acres, you really need to have a professional. So this is a service that the land conservancy provides, is doing these open space grant applications. I think for our fee, you know, to do the open space plan and have it good for ten years is just a win-win for any municipality. Because you're done and you're in, and then you just focus on, you know, doing the land.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Pam, did you wanna add anything?
I, I would appreciate, you know, if we were to do this, I think the priority needs study is also important. Because we've, we've kicked around ideas a lot in open space and it is very hard to prioritize. So.
So I, I think from our vantage perspective, from the planning board, the subcommittee members that were in the meeting and also Fran Bardo, who is the planning board liaison to open space, our sense was that we should pursue this. And we felt that Barbara was particularly well positioned because of those GIS files and the information that she's already had, because she did our, that flood, what is that called? The flood plan, right? So she was, had a, already a level of familiarity with the village. She had a lot of information already at her disposal. And it would just be, our opinion was a bit of a seamless transition for her to just step right into this. I did wanna ask Matt Rogers one question, Mr. Matt?
Sure.
So if the village council choose, decides to move forward, do we have to kick this over to the planning board for comment? Or, I know we're just in the process of, of looking at our master plan. We have some RFPs that just came back on that. So is this something that has to go to the planning board or not really?
I don't believe it's required to go to the planning board. It may be something you wanna vet with them and explain to them and get some input back on it. But it doesn't, I don't think there's a requirement that it be reviewed by the planning board.
From our smaller committee, I would say that we felt very strongly that this was the direction. And that was the reason that we invited Barbara this evening to come and do our presentation and speak. Okay, anyone else, any questions? Okay, all right, Barbara, thank you so much. I mean, twice to Ridgewood.
It's all good, thank you very much, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess what I need to know though is, is the council in agreement to move forward? And then we can see, you know, what our funding is in open space to be able to pay for this.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the funding is there, right Pam? I think we already established that. I'm in agreement to moving forward, I think the timing on this is very good because we did do the RFP for the master plan, we just completed our visioning process. So this is going to be a solid tie-in and it will allow us to accomplish this in, you know, in, at all the same time. And I think that makes the document that much more powerful as a whole. So I'm all good.
Yeah, open space also felt that this was really important for stewardship of, of the green spaces in Ridgewood.
I'm, I'm for it.
And we would include, Mike, what was it that you were interested in, was the?
The resource inventory.
So that we would want included in that, just especially since it looks like we can get some added sustainable credit, which is important for us too.
Well, that probably, I mean, to, by the time the, the first submission is June sixth, so unless this thing was gonna get done kind of over the summer, wouldn't be included in this round. So that would have to be included then, and you know, if we, the committee filed again next year, but I think it's three years that the, the certification is good for. So, you know, potentially the next round, they said unless, again, this is kind of like fast tracked and gets going and we could say we're gonna have it by November, I believe that the final deadline is early in November. So, I mean, if we could figure it out and get it done by then, we could probably include it. But if not, again, it'd have to wait until the next mission.
All right, did you have some?
I thought she said they don't do environmental resource inventories.
No, it was listed on, on the things they do, and she said that they, they do, they do them.
I thought I understood her to say she does do them.
Yeah, it was listed on the services that, that they provide, and I think it was like the first or second slide.
Right, is that what she said would earn Ridgewood like twenty points or something?
Yeah.
For the sustainability?
Yeah.
Yeah. But she, they only do what's related to preservation and conservation. Environmental resource inventory wouldn't, would go beyond that. Well, I'll call her up.
It was listed, so. Questions, I mean.
Heather, can you, would you be kind enough to email Barbara tomorrow and get application on that? Because I, I understood whatever it was that Mike was asking, I understood Barbara to say that they did that and that the benefit was these points, the sustainable jersey. So I, maybe I misunderstood, you know.
That's the way, that's what I understood too.
I'll do it, I'll do it tomorrow.
Pretty direct.
And then if we can, this way we can have that all outlined in whatever that proposal is for, as well. Okay, so with that, we're gonna go on to our affordable housing update and ordinances. And I know Beth McManus has been patiently waiting somewhere in the Zoom place. Where is Beth?
Coming in from the Zoom queue. There she is.
Hi Beth, thanks for your patience.
Hi folks, no worries, happy to be here.
Our conflict planner who manages all of our affordable. Heather, do you wanna do background on any of this first?
You know, I think I'm gonna leave it up to Beth, because it's, it's pretty complicated and she explains things very clearly. And so I'm gonna have her do it.
That's, that's fine. So hi everybody, I'm here to talk a little bit about affordable housing, what the status is and sense of what's been done and what has yet to be completed. And, and so ultimately what the goal is. So just as a little bit of background, ultimately the goal is to get through this whole process and to have a third round judgment of repose that will last through July 2025. It's not that long at this point, but that is the maximum amount of time available. So it's, it's still a very worthwhile effort. And when I talk about getting a judgment of repose, that means a couple things. One, it means that our affordable housing, housing plan programs, all the documents have been reviewed and approved by the court. That judgment of repose is actually a court order that states these documents have been reviewed and approved. And the other item that it means is that the village has immunity from builder's remedy litigation, which is a type of litigation that developers can use to, basically to, to generate approvals for much higher density housing than what a municipality is comfortable with. It means something a little different in Bergen County compared to what it might mean in say Cumberland County. But at the end of the day, the thing that ties all builder's remedy litigation together is that it's, it's a project that the municipality would not have approved. It's not consistent with the zoning, it typically includes more density. And so the way that municipalities can maintain control of their zoning is by going through this process and getting that judgment of repose. Now, the village started this back in 2015 when, when every other municipality or most other municipalities in the state did as well. And you've completed quite a few steps already. Frankly, I think some of the more difficult steps have already been completed. But there's some more work to be done. So we filed in court in 2015, we take this process off. And then in a few years later, we settled with Fair Share Housing Center, which was, was perhaps the hardest step in this process. Ridgewood got through that in December of last year. And in that settlement agreement, it stated that the, it stated the municipality's affordable housing obligation. And it also stated the, the terms of how the, the village would meet that obligation and then various other terms to promote affordable housing. That was done, that was approved by the court. Like I said, that was huge and important and difficult step. We also, once we got that approval of our settlement agreement, the village went forward and took several other steps. Importantly, you guys adopted a housing plan, that's the housing element of the master plan. And that, that's adopted by the, by the planning board. That housing plan, and I will say, that's largely where this process came to a pause. The housing element was adopted and there are a variety of documents attached or as an appendix of the housing element that are done. But that's the, that step was the last one that was fully completed. So what remains is for the, for this governing body to endorse the housing plan. And it's, it's not quite literally an approval, but it does allow or approve the plan to be submitted to court for their review and presumed approval in the future. That's a necessary step in order to move this process forward with the court. And so that's one item that needs to be done and that actually can be done by, by this body. Another step I wanna give you guys credit for is, the village has actually adopted all of the zoning that was necessary. And that's a huge step and really positive when we look at what, what important steps the village has taken. You've actually adopted the inclusionary housing zones and issued approval for, for the projects that are gonna satisfy the obligation. If you think about your, your four developers like the KS Broad, the Enclave Site, et cetera, those are all issued approvals, so that's great news. But in terms of additional items that we need to submit to court, there are a few items. So, and then there's one big item that I wanna, that I think we need to focus on. Spend a little time on it, I'm gonna leave that to the end. But there's a little bit of additional crediting documentation that needs to be gathered, like deed restrictions for a couple of the projects. And that's something that sits with me and that I can finish up for you guys. We also need to finish up the spending plan. The, the village has an affordable housing trust fund, so we need to project the funds that will be collected through 2025 and make a proposal as to how those will be expended. That's been started in my office and I can finish that up for you guys. There are some additional administrative documents that need to be done and, documents might not be the right word, but resolutions and actions that need to be taken. So one of those items is to appoint a municipal housing liaison. That's something that can be done by this body. It, it has to be a staff member in the village and I can talk to you about what that means for that person. The village also should appoint an administrative agent that is a consultant, similar to myself, but I, I don't do that work. And it's somebody that is qualified to do the income verification of the affordable, of the households that would be moving into the affordable units. So they do income qualification, they do marketing, they advertise the units. And they generally manage the units, the affordable units only, not the market rate units. They generally manage those units to make sure that they're eligible for credit. Because at the end of the day, it's important that we get credit for, for these portable units. Otherwise, all of your actions have been for naught. That administrative agent is something that I, I recommend the village move forward on in the near term. Because unless, unless you folks tell me you have an idea of who you'd like to appoint or, or I've overlooked an appointment that's already happened, it can, some towns prefer to do that via RFQ or RFP.
You already did it.
You've already done that with Piazza Associates.
Who, who is it, I'm sorry?
Piazza Associates.
Oh, Piazza, Frank Piazza, wonderful, that's great, okay, wonderful.
Quick question, didn't we appoint Chris as our?
We did.
Already did that step too.
Oh, the municipal housing liaison?
Yeah, that's our village engineer, so we did that.
Great, lucky him. So then, what I would ask is that I get copies of the adopted municipal housing liaison resolution and a copy of the resolution appointing the administrative agent and a copy of their contract. Because those items will need to be submitted to the court for their review and approval. So that's fantastic. The last resolution that, that I believe needs to be done, unless you folks tell me that you think that's been taken care of already, is called a resolution of intent to fund. And it is a resolution that simply says if we are required to expend more funds than what's in our portable housing trust fund, the village commits to do so. And you can commit to do so, yes, by applying for grants, but what it really means is that money from general revenue or bonding to the extent necessary. That said, I just wanna be very clear that you guys don't actually have any costly programs in your housing plan. That resolution, I would say, is most meaningful for municipalities that have municipally sponsored construction, whether they anticipate purchasing land for the production of affordable housing. And that's simply not the case here in Ridgewood. You guys have met your obligation through existing units that don't require additional subsidy or through zoning mechanisms. And their subsidy is, is largely through the zoning rather than, than a direct payment. And that brings me to the last item. That, are there any questions about these administrative or trust fund documents, anything like that?
Yes, I have a question. On the, oh, endorsing the housing plan, sorry, endorsing. So could you just, because you said it's not just a resolution saying we approve, what exactly is that?
So specifically, it, it acknowledges that the planning board has already adopted the document because the, the housing element is actually a planning board document, like, like your land use element, for example. So it acknowledges that the planning board adopts it, has already adopted it. And then it, it authorizes the document and, and all related housing items that need to be submitted to court, to be sent to court. And it ultimately, it basically asks the court to review and approve the, the housing element. So it's, it's a required acknowledgement and submittal to the court by the governing body.
And are we ready now, like if we, if we were to prepare that material, we're not quite there yet, correct?
I, I have no concern about the resolution being adopted. It is, it is not a requirement that every single item that will be submitted to court be completed at that time. As a practical matter, they're typically not, it's often not done. You know, where the, the vast majority of documents are in place and when the housing element is endorsed, as is the case here. And then between the endorsement and the ultimate court hearing, typically there's additional documentation submitted to, to Fair Share, to the court and to the special master.
So is that something that we could actually prepare and have ready for next week without Heather getting mad at me? If everyone agrees, is that something? I guess I have to ask everyone, because do we prepare that resolution? Are you going to prepare that?
Oh, I, yes, I can prepare it. In fact, I, I think I might have submitted a draft of it for, for both to take a look at.
Okay, I'll take a look, if there's a draft, then we'll, okay, fine.
Yeah, so absolutely, you guys can, if, if, if the governing body is comfortable with it, there's no reason to, to delay that particular action.
Yeah, because for me, I just, I, I just, this is the stuff that I think is legal and it's important to clear it off the desk and get it and not let it fall through the cracks. I think Pam may have a question.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, all right, so I'm good, now you can continue.
Okay, so, so that was, you know, like I said, we, you've done a lot of the work, a lot of the administration. There are a few items of administration trust fund that need to be finalized, although less than I had thought, so that's, that's great news. There is one item that we need to talk about though. One of the items in your housing plan, well, let me start, let me back up for a moment. One of the items in your settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center and also reflected in your housing plan, addresses the Valley Hospital site. And so the, the Valley Hospital site was addressed in the, in the settlement agreement by having, by stating that the, the village would adopt a redevelopment plan for the site that provided for thirty-five to forty-five family affordable units at a minimum. Or by approximately September 2020, and yes, I mean last year, the site would be rezoned at a, for overlay zoning, not by ride zoning, but overlay zoning at a density of twelve units an acre. And so the situation that we, that we find ourselves now is that the redevelopment, so one redevelopment plan, in order to adopt that, there needs to be a designation of the site that it meets the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment. And that work's not been authorized or started. And that work's not been authorized or started. Um, that would need to be completed and then a redevelopment plan that provided for. Uh, for the ultimate redevelopment of the Valley Hospital site would need to be adopted. Now that deadline has passed and and so I think the village has two choices. One, uh, one, we can simply rezone the property with overlay zoning to permit uh, inclusionary housing at twelve units an acre. So that's that's certainly, and I think obviously, the first option. The second option is however. To uh, to go back to Fair Share Housing Center and just simply say, hey, folks, we're running behind. We've we've had a hut on our plate. We're looking for some additional time. Um, I do think if we make that request, we should have a plan in place as to when. Uh, when these actions can be completed so that so they're not viewing it as an open ended uh, as an open ended extension. We want to be able to give them uh, specific milestones that the village can commit to meeting and see uh, what they're willing to do for uh. Uh, if they're willing to consider that and if there are any terms that that would need to be discussed. So that's, I I would say that's sort of the elephant in the room when we talk about uh, finishing up this process is what to do about the valley site. Everything else is. I mean, it's important. Those items will need to be provided, but in terms of scale, it's really the Valley Hospital that needs to be discussed.
I can add a little bit to that. Um, I've, you know, we, as we approached this and approached that deadline. Um, one of the aspects of the settlement agreement was also to um, it was approved by Fair Share and the court. With Valley's consent was to um, could make uh, the present. Facilities at the uh, Linwood Avenue Campus conforming in our zoning ordinances. We had asked for details with regard to that from Valley Hospital and it was a long time coming. I don't think we still have the full details to be able to do that at this point in time. So that was one of the reasons why we were um, delayed in terms of doing it. So. Um, I have been in touch just relatively recently, I'll say with um. Uh, Representative of Valley, um. Robin Goldfisher and I discussed with her just getting some time. I didn't think, she didn't think it would be a problem. I've got to get that formalized, but I want to, you know, I would be something I would get their consent. Contact Fair Share with regard to it, but get the last details that we need with regard to that because that one way or the other, that still is part of what we. Have to do as part of our settlement agreement and we need Valley's help with that. We'll get their consent. And then be able to um, at least develop an ordinance to make the present facility conforming. And uh, from there, uh, approach the court because I think we will need court approval to get the additional time. So we. As Beth said, we need to put that plan in place, get an idea of what our timeline is going to be and um. And go from there with regard to uh, dealing with Fair Share and then the court, so.
That's great. Thank you, Matt, for that additional. Uh, yeah, that's an additional component as well.
Um, okay. Anyone have any questions yet?
It sounds like uh, asking for more time is the way to go.
I I think that's a viable option. I can't, I I can't, um, I I I don't want to predict Fair Share's response. Uh, quite honestly, just I I don't want to, I don't want to try to channel them uh, with, you know, for fear of not doing it successfully. Um, but I think the the idea that we would ask i- is very much a viable option and if the if the if. Folks are not comfortable just simply providing overlay zoning on the site, then I think it's an avenue that we've got to explore.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor. Go, go. I was going to say at the time of the settlement, I mean, the options um, of the overlay zone um, were certainly acceptable to the council back then. Um, the idea of redevelopment gave us a little bit more say. In terms of the way that we would be able to develop the site if and when Valley ever left it for medical purposes. So. Those were the, those are the considerations back then and I think ideally, we probably have a better, you know, and it was felt. Back at the time of the settlement, we have a better idea. About how to develop it, I think, than just going overlay. So that's why we thought about the redevelopment aspect of it. To try and make that work and everybody liked the idea. So I think I'm hoping that that's something that would be able to be uh. Carried through and uh, still have the opportunity to do that.
So let let me just ask because the 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 time involved from a planning perspective. Is it? Just again, so if we were to. Ask for the extension of time, but in the interim. I mean, it doesn't hurt us to. I mean, want to do the redevelopment area and need a redevelopment for those reasons. So there's no benefit to beginning any process of overlay at all, right?
No, I would not recommend that we go down the, go down the path of adopting the overlay zoning if if we're going to potentially take it back through the redevelopment.
I I agree. Um, so I think we should go ahead and ask for the additional time as an area in need of redevelopment and then. I think that we should have at least when we're asking for additional time. We should have a timeframe in mind as to where, how long this would take us. And, you know, just in terms of an area in re- in need of redevelopment, what what would be your guesstimate on that if if the planning board? Schedule were fairly light?
Well, I think that. Uh, I would imagine the work could be completed inside of six weeks. It's single, it's more or less a single site. Um, and. At that point, notice requirements have to be in place and uh, notice for redevelopment planning can be a bit more. Uh, it's more than just the the typical ten days for a master plan. So um, six weeks, maybe another month for scheduling. So, you know, I'm comfortable saying that the redevelopment study could be completed. Inside of three months, although I would want to schedule that out just to make sure. I don't know the planning board's meetings uh, very well. Um, to make sure that was not going to be an issue, but but uh, conflict, meeting conflicts aside, three months seems reasonable. And then the redevelopment plan could take a little bit longer. Uh, that said though, I don't know. Uh, if if folks were, if folks knew at the time that the plan was or the site was designated, how they. Wanted the site to be redeveloped, that could cut the time significantly. If it was uh, something that required uh, visioning exercise, public outreach, et cetera. Then I would want to extend the timeline to properly account accommodate that. Um, I. Uh, unless there's been some some planning for the site, it sounds like folks have been thinking about it, but. Um, I suspect that that's going to be a site that generates a lot of interest in the village and so we want to either. Conform to the existing vision or we may need to create one through this process for the site.
But but I also think that it's it's important to remember that Fair Share understood that the interest, the desire to have some. Um, continuity with the, if I remember correctly, we discussed at length the. Um, kind of maintaining sense of the village and continuity. Grounding areas. So they were very open to that. So I think that we have a a at least an understanding of how we proceed. Um, based on those discussions, I guess with Josh, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they agreed to that. So hopefully if they'll give us the time, then maybe you and I can take a look at the scheduling and see. With Jane Wondergem, see how we can navigate this and fit it into our scheduling. Because it's certainly, I think it's going to be light, a light summer with the exception of one application. So the timing's good.
Yeah, that that works out really well then. Uh, yeah. Yeah, I'd be happy to to put that together. Um, I just. It's not necessary quite at this point, but uh, as we get closer to the redevelopment plan, obviously, there's a lot of guidance that that's needed to make sure that the plan. Fits what folks are looking to achieve on the property, aside from just simply, you know, the affordable housing component of thirty-five to forty-five. Family affordable units is going to be a relatively small component compared to, you know, the entire project and what it means for the village.
Anyone else, any questions? Okay. But Matt, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nothing of even what's been discussed. I think maybe Beth and I can discuss in the next day or two.
Yeah.
Just uh, how best to approach Fair Share and um, first and then and then I'll get the, get things ready for the court.
That's great.
Okay, great. Okay, I think you're good.
Thanks, folks. Nice seeing you.
Thank you, Beth.
Okay, we'll uh, move on to our discussion items. Ridgewood Water, we have um, awarding of a professional services contract. For the um, car linwood treatment facility. Um, so. We require professional services for this. M- Mott McDonald of South Island, New Jersey will provide um. The design of the PFOS treatment, other necessary facility improvements will be designed. And construction, administration and inspection for all phases of the work will be provided. This is an amount not to exceed three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. The linwood well. Will be piped to the car treatment plant, additions and modifications to the existing plant. And the construction of the raw water pipeline to convey the linwood flow to the plant are necessary to complete the project. Linwood well is currently inactive and can only be operated when the well is connected to the new treatment. The new uh, what the treated well will provide up to an additional six hundred gallons per minute of capacity. Um, we've had Mott McDonald do several projects for us. They prepared the Ridgewood Water PFOS master plan. And so based on their past project experience and working knowledge of the system, they are the best suited for this professional engineering service. I do have Mr. Calby here, if any of you have any questions.
Any more questions? Did I understand correctly that this will double the uh, capacity from about six hundred gallons per minute, per minute to thirteen hundred gallons per minute?
Yes, the capacity will double on on the amount of water that will feed to the treatment unit. But initially, the unit itself has a capacity of only a thousand gallons per minute. But as part of this work, we're going to do a concept to expand to cover that extra amount.
When I first read this, I thought three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars just to design this. But then as I read the papers, I realized there's a lot of oversight during construction and all the closeout documents and permitting and there's a lot of work involved.
Yes, there's a a bunch of different phases that are included in the work.
Yeah.
I was just looking for the comments on the holding tank. Did I, I don't recall where I saw that.
That's on, it's within the Mott McDonald proposal. I believe it's page, the second page, page two of six.
Well, a backwash holding tank. So I just, um. Do you just explain that to me?
So uh, because of the media we're utilizing is granulated activated carbon. It's it's a virgin material, um, and it requires backwashing to achieve the the required pH. Um, in in the media and in the water. Um, and also during operation, if there's a pressure differential in the vessels, there could be. Clogging due to some sediment or organic buildup over time. That requires backwashing, no different than you would do with a pull filter system. When we do that in such large vessels like this, there's a enormous volume of water. That we're backwashing and it it will overcome the sanitary source system. So the holding tank kind of pleads it out slowly. So that's the purpose behind it. To avoid a an overflow in the the system.
Okay. And do, like, what does something like that, what is the added cost for that?
So at the car facility, we have an underground uh, tanker ready. Um, it's. It's not sized for the amount of backwash we'd be doing with the additional well. So in lieu of constructing a new one in addition to that. Uh, we're recommending buying um, a portable frac uh, tank. It's it's a tank on wheels that we can then bring to any of the PFOS sites. Uh, for the backwashing to hold that excess water.
Okay.
In terms of the actual uh, cost, I don't have that at at this time.
Okay, I understood. Okay, thank you. That was my only.
Okay, so we'll move on to budget. Um, awarding contract for a new village phone system. So in May of twenty twenty, the uh, village utilized the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract to solicit pricing. For a new village-wide telephone equipment, software, services, project management, training. One-year warranty, five-year software and voicemail assurance plan, plus four extra years of hardware and software maintenance. The amount offered by the co-op vendor, which was VoIP, was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. Um, the village council uh, indicated that in an effort to obtain more favorable prices, that we go out for bid. So on May sixth of this year, bids were received for the phone system. It was structured essentially the same as last year's bid. Except for the four extra years of additional hardware and software maintenance were not in there. It stipulated only one year. So two bids were received, one was from VoIP Networks, which was one sixty-six, three eighty, seventy cents. The other one was X Tel Communications at two hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. So the apparent low bidder, which is VoIP Networks, did not provide three required items with their submitted bid. This includes the consent of surety, the bid bond and the public works contractor regi- registration. All three items are required under the bid. Um, and the consent of surety and the bid bond are requirements for submission. So therefore their bid um, must be rejected due to the two uh, fatal flaws. The X Tel bid was found to be complete, but it actually included the extra four years of maintenance above what was requested. For an additional sixty-one thousand, eighty-four dollars. The big cost, if you deduct this from their actual total bid, will be one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, if you remove the sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars for the extra four years of maintenance from VoIP's Sourcewell contract price. That results in an amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. It's laid out in a chart on the second page, which makes it a bit more clear. Um, so basically if we. Purchase the phone system through the Sourcewell contract, we'd have an estimated savings of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and eighteen cents. Without the extra four years of maintenance. So um, we, um, Mr. Calby and uh, Mr. Hanson uh, consulted with our qualified purchasing agent. And his recommendation is to either rebid the project or award the contract under the Sourcewell contract. So I have both Mr. Calby and Mr. Hanson here to answer any questions you may have.
Um, i- isn't the Sourcewell contract that that bids from last year?
Correct.
Yes.
So how would all the chip shortages and every other shortage and inflation and everything else, I mean, how? How can you hold them to to a bid from a year ago?
Dylan, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the co-op uh, purchase contract is still valid. I don't, I don't know the exact expiration date on it. Uh, but to Mr. Sedan's point about chip shortages and availability, that that I couldn't answer. Uh, for materials.
I would have to call them up and question that, just find out if they hold to the bid pricing that they submitted for Sourcewell or if pricing has fluctuated.
Hmm, right, because I mean, pricing has fluctuated with everything. So a a year ago is completely different from today.
But when they, they did submit the bid for the one sixty, even though they they were missing things, they were still within the same uh, realm of pricing.
Well, I mean, that kind of, that's another concern for me too. So they're they're submitting bids and they don't have all the proper information and so then what's to say they don't come back and say, oh, we need a change order. And then another change order and then five other change orders because they were the low bidder and they just didn't include things.
Yeah, I I I'm, can I just, I want to kind of dovetail onto what the deputy mayor said. My concern is that. The Sourcewell, both the Sourcewell um, quote came from VoIP and then the second bid, when we went out to bid, came from VoIP. And their second bid, which is now a year later, is higher than their original bid, which may be reflective of exactly what the deputy mayor is suggesting. That the the cost inflation, ship, shipping, you know, chips, chips, uh, all of those things. Uh, factored into their newest bid, which is higher because it's the same company. But curiously, I think what we learned through this process was not only the, that the bid itself for VoIP was uh. But curiously, I think what we learned through this process was not only the, that the bid itself for VoIP was, uh, fatally flawed due to missing documents, but we also learned that they didn't carry over certain costs. And I think maybe, um, Councilwoman Walsh can, if she wants to speak to that, because she was kind of in that meeting where the analysis was done. Go ahead, Bernadette, sorry.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I mean, I'll just jump in. So when, um, we had a, a meeting prior to this meeting, the village manager, um, Mr. Calby, Mr. Hanson, um, just to kind of get a, a, a lay of the land of, of what was going on with the bid. And, um, so there were things that were included. So I, I still haven't found, um, where, um, we did not ask for the five-year, that it was an option. And I know that you guys were going to ask Matt about that in terms of the bid. And I don't know what came of that. But, um, I guess my bigger concern is that we're considering a bid that was rejected in this analysis. Typically, if a bid is rejected because they had fatal flaws and they had multiple fatal flaws, we wouldn't even consider them. So, and I, and I mentioned that in our, in our other meeting, that why are we even going to what they presented? Because what they presented was not acceptable to us. So here it is in a, in a memo, um, you know, using those numbers. To me, those numbers don't exist because the bid was rejected and it wasn't a complete bid. Um, I agree with the deputy mayor that the other, the other bids are over a year old. And if it was the same, and I didn't realize it was the same company until we had that conversation. And I was like, wait a second, it's the same person. So they didn't fill out the bid properly, but then they, they are the Sourcewell bid a year ago. And I guess in the interim, the competitor is also a Sourcewell agent for the Mitel phone. So that's the confusion I have with the whole, with the whole process. So.
But I think to your point, Councilman Walsh, is that the, I, I, I think that, that it was important to list the VoIP, um, on here because remember that the Sourcewell quote came from VoIP in twenty twenty. And so when we, if you were to compare the twenty twenty to the twenty twenty-one bid, what the deputy mayor is stating about the, the cost increases would be reflected actually in that twenty twenty-one fatally flawed bid. And, and yet, because they didn't carry the numbers, the bid itself is, the, the math was wrong in it. So it actually is higher than what is, is ISO, is identified as with the maintenance. And without the maintenance, the actual bid, if you did the math, was higher anyway. So I, I think that it's important to note that since it is VoIP in twenty twenty and then twenty twenty-one, that discrepancy, with or without the math, is likely the costs of the increase to, to, uh, cost of goods, if that's what the deputy mayor is suggesting, I think.
Yep.
So I, I mean, I, my opinion is, I, I mean, I don't know what anybody else is thinking about this, but I think that when we went out to bid, we received two bids. And the, um, lowest responsible bidder was X Tel Communications. Uh, uh, so I don't know if we go out to bid again, because as Councilwoman Walsh pointed out, now X Tel is also Sourcewell, right? Is that what you understand? So we're just going to have the same two people bidding against each other. Uh, it will wind up with two more bids, one again from X Tel and one from VoIP. But I think what we're seeing in that bid, the twenty twenty-one VoIP bid, is that they are reflecting some increases in the cost without doing the proper math.
Well, X Tel is not Sourcewell.
No, I'm not saying they were, they were an agent for Sourcewell, right? They can bid on that now.
No, VoIP, you're, you're, I think you're mixing up VoIP and X Tel.
VoIP is Sourcewell, X Tel is not a state contract or a Sourcewell contract.
Yeah, they are now.
They are now, and, and they are now, and they can actually bid on that through Sourcewell. They are now, and is that what is called an agent, Bernadette? Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're an agent to Sourcewell. So if we go out to bid again, we're going to, the result will be a Sourcewell quote, presumably from both VoIP and X Tel. Would that be correct, Bernadette?
I, I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, but we only know that now X Tel is on that as well.
I, I just know prices are going up and up and up and up every day. Like I, I worry that if we put it out to bid, it's going to go even higher. Um, I don't know why we would consider VoIP, but it seems like, you know, if their bid was that flawed, like, why do we want to deal with a company like that? Wouldn't you be concerned that they're going to keep coming back? And with change orders, like Deputy Mayor said, I, I don't know if I would, you know, trust them.
Yeah, I, I would just go with X Tel.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree at this point, only because, you know, then the, they provided, they responded to the RFP responsibly. They've given us all the information we need. They, there were no errors or omissions, um, on their bid. And I think the VoIP one, me personally, is just a little all over the place. And I agree with the deputy mayor, I think it will just be, um, you know, a change order nightmare potentially.
Do we have the funding to award it to X Tel? Or is that over our funding?
So I think our funding from that meeting they said was two sixty-two in total. That was what was budgeted.
Yeah, but it also includes a server that I'm purchasing from our state contract Dell for the VoIP, for the backend system. That was the only thing that wasn't, what?
You broke up, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. That, the two sixty-two also includes a server that we're going to purchase for the project from our state vendor, uh, state contract vendor Dell, because we get a better warranty than outside vendors and plus we get the government pricing. So I buy, always buy direct when it's a server equipment.
So how much?
Uh, with the licensing for the VM, uh, we're looking at almost eighteen.
So it's really two sixty-two minus eighteen?
Yeah.
Well, now that X Tel is a Sourcewell agent, we should look to see what their prices are under the Sourcewell contract, right? Because we don't know what they are. Because we, we were not aware that they were, uh, Sourcewell agent for Mitel.
Oh, do, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Bernadette.
No, so Matt, I, I just, uh, could you opine on that question that had, um, because that was, that was the, the question that came up in that, in that meeting, was that, um, the, the bid that we put out asked for the option of the maintenance.
The five-year maintenance aspect of it.
Yeah, so that was, so they, so that was the, the difference in the pricing as well, that that was an option.
Yeah, I think, I think in, in particularly in the memo, it reads that, you know, when they compared the bids to each other, um, X Tel had put in the five-year option of maintenance, and that was included in their two forty-nine.
Right, so, so having four years. Wasn't it four years extra maintenance?
Right.
It's an additional four years. The, the bid itself included a one-year, uh, maintenance period as part of the base price.
Oh, okay.
So in X Tel's bid, they included the total cost for the extra four years of maintenance and service in the total base bid.
Right, so, so that was the question to you, Matt, was that the op, the option, can we reserve the option to either, um, or how does that option get reserved for those extra years?
Well, it seemed like it was broken out in the bid, I guess. That's who are able to compute it, the sixty-one oh eighty-four. So in, in my mind, that could be opted out, I suppose. And you could award the bid with the, um,
With the option.
With, with the option or without the option, so.
Yeah, because, I mean, that would be the route that I.
As long as all other, as long as other, other components are in there, and it seems to be that way with X Tel, so.
Yeah, so that would be the option that I would want to, to just go with.
Rich was about to say something.
And then.
I was just going to say, I, I think, you know, Matt, you could tell me if I'm wrong, that you'd have to make sure X Tel is okay with that.
Oh, yeah, well.
It was a lump sum bid, and their total bid price included that four years.
But it was a line item that you could discern what would have cost of that was, no? Not, or not a line item, but from the bid, you could find out if it was, what the cost of that four-year.
Yeah, our, our bid requite, requested a lump sum price only. But both bidders broke out their line items that made up that lump sum price. So I guess that's the, the bigger question for me. You know, because typically I want to do a lump sum bid, whatever the bidder bids, that's the number we're going to award. You know, we didn't bid the maintenance as an option. If we did, we'd have separate line items on the proposal sheet that said item two, maintenance price, item three, item, you know, year four and five, but we didn't do that. But they both provided a breakdown in their backup.
Yeah, so I would just. Good thing, no? Because I think that that, that line item, that breakout was critical to making sure this is done right, no?
No, I'm, I'm not saying it's not a good thing. I, I think it's good to have. I just think I'm recommending you, if you want to proceed with X Tel, you ask them that they're willing to remove those four years from the award amount. Because they might have considered that in their whole bid and were, were anticipating getting that, the four years as part of their award.
So, but they, right, so you're thinking that maybe, are you suggesting that there was added profit baked into the maintenance that may shift, change the, the overall bid, if that's excluded?
There, there could be anything in the basis of how they put their prices together. You know, because it was just a lump sum bid. You know, that's, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up.
Right, so that's, it's a good point. So, I, I think in fairness, that's what we should do is see. Because Dylan, then we would go out to bid for the added maintenance, correct?
Yeah, after the equipment's installed, then we know exactly how much equipment we have. Then we go out to bid for the maintenance as well as an hourly support contract. So what emergency after-hours would cost versus during the day hours. So if stuff was outside the realm of the phone system, if we needed additional work to be done, they would bid on a price on a, an hourly, um, uh, service call along with the maintenance.
Okay, so I guess what we need to do is out, do an outreach to X Tel and request that, um, if, if the, if the, um, the contract can be awarded minus the added maintenance. And then if so, we could just make sure that that's the number that's been calculated here and then proceed to award the contract then next week, right?
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
As long as Matt's okay with that too, because.
I don't, I mean, I don't think that's a problem. I certainly think the way that the, it was approached would warrant that type of a discussion.
So when, if we can do that, then we'll know by, I guess, Monday that it's going to be on our agenda. We can approve it. And because I think that the phone system, we definitely, I don't think we can take much more time either on this. Dylan, he said, so time's not on our side. And so it's been, you know, unfortunately for us, the, the VoIP thing, it was a little bit of a mess. But I think X Tel has been providing a quality service to the village for a long time. So, all right, so let's do that, and then we can proceed. Okay, anyone else, any other questions, anyone?
One, one last question. So Dylan, are you thinking, so the sixty-one thousand over four years comes to about fifteen thousand a year? So do you think if we bid that out separately, it, we're going to do better than fifteen thousand a year?
Um, we can, no, we want to do, uh, better on the Mitel pricing for the warranty extension. What we would do better on is the hourly charge for the other part of the maintenance, for the outside of the warranty maintenance or the outside service maintenance.
Okay.
And at the time, since a lot of the vendors in this area weren't on Sourcewell, that's why we thought it was best to, to bid it out after the system was installed.
Okay.
But then now there also will be, if X, X Tel is on Sourcewell, they would have had a submission for their hourly as well as on Sourcewell as well. So now we can, we can actually compare that for the next year's renewal.
So can I just, I wanted to ask Matt another question then. Since, I know that it's always different when you do these RFPs and the government is involved in stuff. So it always makes negotiating a little bit different. But if, if, because X Tel is the lowest responsible bidder already, and we're going to go to X Tel and request that they remove the added maintenance, can we then negotiate on that maintenance amount with X Tel and then add it back in? Is that something that we can just kind of negotiate and maybe?
I think, I, I'm pretty sure you have to work off of the bid, um, response with regard to the numbers. And that's why, you know, the issue in, in being able to separate from a cost perspective, what the cost for the four, additional four years would be. You know, for the, for providing that maintenance and attention. That's why it was important to make that point. So you got to use their numbers that they've put in the bid.
So let's not, oh, let's not make anything overly complicated. So we'll just find out if we can extract that number out. And if so, we continue and we'll award this, we'll take care of this next week. Okay, everybody's good?
Yes, okay. The next one is, um, awarding, um, a rubber, uh, contract under a cooperative purchasing program under, uh, Sourcewell. Um, is, is for rubber tire front-end loader for water pollution control facility. This is through GAMCA sales of Edison, New Jersey for an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents. The funding is in the twenty twenty-one capital budget. Um, it's replacing a two thousand and nine, uh, rubber tire front-end loader, which is in the shop a lot. Uh, this is used to transfer grit from the screenings facility of the head end of the plant daily into dumpsters for off-site disposal. This type of machine has greatly reduced the chances of stress and strain injuries to staff while moving the heavy grit loads. Um, the articulated loader, um, is also used to help clear sidewalks of snow in the winter. So.
Any questions? Grit load?
Mayor, I'm going to stop you right there. You, you really don't want to know what grit is.
I agree.
I have no clue. It's the grit load.
Mr. Rogers says we'd be pleased to tell you, though.
Grit is what we separate out of the flow before it goes into the treatment works. Sand, gravel, hard material.
There we go. You're right, I didn't want to know.
Well, thank you for the photograph, because I didn't know what, what we were talking about. So the photo helped.
Okay.
Next item is awarding, um, a contract under the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey um, for, uh, set of vehicle lifts in the lower garage for fleet services. I believe we just recently did one for the upper garage. Um, and so, again, they can no longer be certified as safe, um, to operate underneath by our mechanics. Um, it's, the vendor is Sturtel Kony USA of, um, Hoffman Services slash Sturtel Kony USA of Newark, New Jersey, not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-one cents. This is in the twenty twenty-one capital budget. And, um, Hoffman Services, as I said, has worked for us for a number of years successfully. And we just awarded the supply of lifts for the upper garage to them.
Any questions? Moving on?
Okay, the next item is authorizing additional funding for the United Way Special Needs Housing. I'm going to have, um, Mr. Rogers take this one.
Yes, uh, this is a, um, a part of what, uh, we talked about a little bit earlier, our Affordable Housing Plan. And everybody knows the Enclave, um, proposal and the Enclave development that's being built. Uh, we had, uh, designated money before, back in January of twenty twenty-one from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund to assist the United Way, Maddalon Associates, and, um, uh, the parties involved with regard to the development and the construction of the, of the special needs housing units at the Enclave. They, from what I understand, they came up a little bit short to the tune of, um, possibly needing, needing at least twenty-five thousand dollars from us to make it work. I think they're going to do some fundraising and some other private aspect of making up the difference, which is almost like about a fifty-fifty split in terms of what they need. But, um, this is an. But um this is an a resolution to provide them with an additional twenty five thousand dollars. From the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The monies are available. There's no issues with exceedance. Or anything such as that that would jeopardize the use of the funds. So this is um a resolution to approve that.
Okay, and no questions?
Do they have any idea why it came up short?
I can only imagine it's might be part of the, I I wasn't privy to that conversation, but I can only imagine it's part of that same discussion that we heard a little bit early about the increased cost. For materials and things like that. I can only imagine that, but I'm not sure that that's what it is. But um. It seems to hit in that ballpark, you know, it's not terribly excessive, but at the same time, it's it's significant, so.
Yeah.
All right, the next item is air filter units for village hall offices. Um, this is a purchase through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. It's um Enviro Cleanse Air Filter Units from Timalong Corporation of Bonita Springs, Florida. Um, it's an amount not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars. Um, and the we've received some test air filter units. They have been used in the offices of Bridgewater Water, and they've shown a difference in the air quality. Um, it's going to be placed in all offices. The courtroom has a few um. Filters um units um and community center rooms. Um, it's really important, especially, you know, during the pandemic. And we're also going to do some um. Bringing in of more fresh air at the end of the day to circulate the air more in uh the building. And this will help not only as we're coming out of the pandemic, but also as we go into a regular flu season or a regular cold season. This will help um with employee health and I think also employee um well being and um. Uh, well, uh, you know, thinking that they're in a clean building and one where the air is circulating well.
Questions, anyone?
Okay. The next item is the proposed stop signs for Highland Avenue approached to McKinley Place. Um, there's a concern because the cars heading southbound on Highland Avenue and then turning at McKinley Place are not. Showing enough caution because right now there are yield signs there. In addition, a motor is heading southbound on Grandview Circle from Highland Avenue. Approaching McKinley Place has a poor line of sight to the right at traffic approaching on Eastbound McKinley Place. So southbound Highland Avenue at McKinley Place presently has a yield sign southbound. Grandview Circle is presently doesn't have a sign at all. So the recommendation is to put stop signs on the south side of Highland Avenue and Grandview Circle at the intersection of McKinley Place.
I don't oppose it, um, but it looks to me when I went to see it. See these two streets that there's a single homeowner and their their bushes are very overgrown, overhanging in the sidewalk and they are. Making it hard to see around corners. But I'm not opposed to the stop signs.
Are they clear on their triangulation, Chris? Have we looked at that?
Um, I didn't read, I looked only quickly visually on the side obstruction and. Eastbound traffic at Grandview Circle at McKinley does have some of that obstruction. The shrubbery that Ms. Perron mentioned is very mature. Um, it's almost like if you were going up Robinson Lane at Oak Street. And at Oak Street, you've got big oak trees in the way, but. Um, are they in obstruction? Yes, do we want to remove them? That kind of defeats the purpose of naming a street Oak Street.
The other thing is, this house is an island. They have no backyard. They have very little in the way of privacy, so. You know, I I hate to ask them to cut back on their bushes. Because that is how they're getting any kind of privacy. But I just thought I'd mention it.
No other questions? Okay, the next item is um revisions to the floodplain management program. Were required to update the ordinance governing activities in the village's floodplains. Um, so this is based on NJDEP and Federal Emergency Management Agency model ordinance. The proposed ordinance after preparation, it was reviewed by NJDEP and FEMA. For compliance and um so the village is obligated to make revisions to continue to be able to participate. In the National Flood Insurance Program, and this provides our residents that are in floodways, floodplains. Um, discounts for the flood insurance that they purchase. Um, so I believe that they um, the ordinance has now been approved, correct, correct? Chris, it's been approved by FEMA and NJDEP?
Yes, I had a conference call with them. We went through the ordinance page by page. Uh, reviewed their recommendations and comments. Um, and that resulted in the ordinance that's presented for the to the council this evening.
So once we do it, we'll adopt it and then we'll send it to DEV and FEMA, correct?
Yes, certified copies, correct.
What's in the PowerPoint? Was that PowerPoint? Did we see the PowerPoint?
I don't believe so. That was a PowerPoint that the we got. Was part of the training seminars, I believe, uh, early on and how to prepare the ordinance and discussion on the ordinances.
Oh.
If the council would like, I could email it to Heather for distribution.
I think I'd like to see, how long is it?
Um.
Sorry, I mean, that wasn't really important, but I just was curious.
I don't recall how long it was.
So it was part, it was the training that it was the training on how to prepare this particular ordinance?
Yeah, it was discussion how to prepare the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to kind of take a look at it. If anybody else wants it, it could be interesting. This is a really big ordinance.
Yes. Um, the next item is transit village. Um, you would ask for the criteria to establish uh NJDOT Transit Village. Um, and so I'll have a councilwoman, Perrin, discuss this further.
Well, we suggested transit village uh status as as a way to make a make. Uh, make us eligible for grants. Um, I think that's even more true today since we've heard within the last week or so that the. Federal government is opening up the possibility for two gateway tunnels underneath the Hudson. And that could affect our our um. Home values really being on the the train lines from Hoboken and Secaucus. If we were a one stop town, our each of our homes would be worth more. Um, and and the funds can be used for a number of things within the half mile radius. Of the train station or the bus station, and that really includes our entire central business district. Um, I do have concerns about um maintaining control over our zoning. As Beth McManus just mentioned. And I I hear what uh Deputy Mayor Seaton was saying the last time we spoke about this. Um, will developers try to use this this eligibility against us? To pressure for more density. But at this point. All we're really asking for is to go to the pre-application meeting. And get more of an understanding from the task force um as to. What they would require of us. Much of it, we've already done. We've already increased our density. We've already changed the zoning. Um, and will that be acceptable to them? Um, I I would like to give this a try, and if they insist on. Overlays that or or zoning that is unpalatable to us, we we can say no, thank you. So I I'm open to hearing your concerns.
My are the same as as before. I'm as against this today as I was uh originally when it first came up, so I mean. I'm not interested in in pursuing it.
Yeah, I I I'll I'll be perfectly honest, I'm not either, but I'm gonna, I I'm not. Um, I do do. A lot of um research into this and. Asked a lot of questions and so um I I'm not really comfortable at all with it. And I don't think that. That we should be rolling the dice because if you have somebody based on this that looks to modify your zoning. Um, or or make any kind of change. That based on this. Then that process would predate any changes you would do to be out of it. And so you might run into other problems with timing and maybe Matt would be able to speak to that just in terms of application process. At the ti- at time of application, if somebody were pursuing something that.
Well, I mean, I don't think in terms of development, I'm not too sure that the transit village. Um, uh. Involvement or at least designation would change the municipal land use law in regard to development applications in terms of the process of how that goes. Um, I mean, from what I understand from Pam, she really is wants to look into it further to find out if there is. Any advantages with regard to this, there there is an application process that you have to go through in order to be. Uh, get involved and get the designation. Um, and most of that has to do with uh providing uh potential projects. I think the the issue is whether or not the work that we've done with our affordable housing developments in in and around. That one half mile of the of the uh of the transit stop. Would satisfy them to do it after the fact sort of instead of um looking at it from a potential standpoint. Um, you know, there's. There's, I think, thirty three communities in the state out of so many municipalities that have taken on this and um. There are two in Bergen County, one is Park Ridge, one is Rutherford. I think there might be worth, might be worth a discussion with those towns to see the benefits that they had. I know Rutherford. I don't know if Rutherford has the same designation that Ridgewood does from the standpoint of a um. Historic district in the CBD or in the area around where their um where their uh stop is. But it it might be worth it to find out from them what their uh, you know, I think Park Ridge has been in it for about six years. Rutherford was one of the initial ones. Um, so it'd be interesting to see what they have to say about it, but um. I if if the council is not necessarily interested in it, that may be the best way to go try and find something out about it because. Um, I don't know for certain that once you file the application, there has to be an approval, but I don't know how hard that ties you in, so. So I I think um. Um, it might be worth it to explore it with some of those other communities before doing that, but that's the only other information I can add to the to the process.
We'd be happy to contact the officials in Park Ridge and Rutherford. And other towns that have have received funds.
So I I think it's important that if that's going to happen, that maybe it's um. To council members and and just so that we have some continuity that in the conversation. Um, I'm not necessarily comfortable with members of like a committee. Reaching out to officials in other municipalities, and I'm not saying that in any way to diminish their role. But I think it's important that if if there's going to be an interest in meeting. Um, and having a conversation with other municipalities that it be a more formal representation of the village.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so why don't we um, I just would like for me personally, because I'm not, I'm not really interested in the transit village, but I just. Want to reread all the documents and maybe you and I can speak about it further, Pam. Yes. Unless everyone else is totally sorry.
Bernie wants to say something.
Um, so I guess I have a a another question about this. Is it linked solely to the central business district? Because we have, you know, I'm looking at this and it's saying, you know, light rail, bus or ferry, so we have the park and ride on Route seventeen. That anybody that's been around there lately noticed it's completely empty, that, you know, bus service is virtually non-existent for just maybe a couple of buses. Uh, and it'll pick up, but but. I don't know that we should necessarily focus on the CBD. Can we focus on an area that needs? Um, focus, meaning the the park and ride, because, I mean, we don't even know if the if those bus lines are going to stay in business and. And then, you know, then what happens? So and I know that over the years, we've always talked about, you know, the success of our senior bus. Um, and that we thought, you know, when we talked about, you know, like Uber and Lyft and all those others that. That not necessarily the focus on, because I I think that the there's a shift in in the workplace. So you're not necessarily going to have people commuting the gateway tunnel. Is not going to mean much to many people very soon. I have a feeling, that's my opinion. Um, so what do we do to, you know, strengthen what what can happen in our area in terms of, you know. Taking the bus to suffer and for people that may have a job there or taking a bus down through, you know, a Rutherford or whatever. But also having these other modes of transportation. Um, you know, ride shares, things like that from the park and ride. Because I know a lot of people still are uncomfortable being on public transit, even though COVID has kind of, you know, moved moved on. Or or so we're trying to get it to, so that would be the question I would have, that if we have control and can direct where we want this transit. Village to be, then I'd be interested in finding out options for us. Yeah.
Pretty clear, I think it's pretty clear that the train station area would would be involved in this. I'm not sure the park and ride would, but it might meet the criteria.
Yeah, when you go through the criteria, I think it's, I agree with Matt, I think the criteria makes it clear specifically what they're looking for because it's asking. Um, for information in in an environment that has public parks, plazas, seat um. Additional seating, civic buildings, sculpture, statues, we have all that, so I I think it it's.
What it is, and and if you look at the design standards that they look for, um, its effort and its intent is to create compact. Mixed-use developments um with a strong residential component. Um, it, you know, is. I I suppose you got to look at that from, look at park and ride from a potential standpoint, but um it certainly, you know, is a. Is a an area that is used for transport to public transportation, so whether or not it fits and whether or not there's an advantage to. Thinking about that in it, I guess that that'll be the in the hands of those two council members that get involved in this, so.
Yeah, because when I read it, it says municipality has identified existing transit that serves the community, either. Rail, light rail, bus or ferry, so it says either.
I know, it 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 might, but the other issue is about looking for mixed-use development, strong residential component, and it it's meant to meant to promote pedestrian. Uh, usage and things like that, so that's why they limited to a mile, that's why they made it to a half, that's why they limited to a half mile. Within the the site of the the transit, so. And that's why, yeah, go ahead, Pam, sorry.
We were looking at the central business district because when you look at the criteria, we're kind of halfway there with affordable housing, which they stress. Um, the mixed use uh with the Benjamin and and other buildings in town. Um, and and bike paths and things like that. We we've got so much, the garage that we've built, we're halfway there. So.
You've got a lot of, the problem with the CBD is that you get a lot of private owners of smaller buildings. And you've got a lot of uh issues with regard to maintaining the historic aspect of that. And does these, the propagation of mixed-use buildings and developments to a greater extent? Change that, so those are the considerations you got to look at in terms of what might happen with a transit villa designation or the planning for that, so. Um, I I still think the best way is to find out a little bit more about it. See if it provides those opportunities that you think it might help. Business district or might help the area in and around park and ride if it fits the criteria and then go from there.
And and I'm going into this, I'll be perfectly honest with a lot of skepticism, obviously, so I I. I'm definitely leaning toward deputy mayor saying, yeah, I I don't think that this is going to be a benefit. I think it could be a problem. So, but I'm willing to to take another look at it.
I I appreciate the skepticism and that's the way I'm approaching it as well, but uh. But uh, you know, I I I think it it might be good for us. We'll see.
Okay, all right.
The next item is pickleball regulation. We discussed this previously, and it was requested that we be put back onto the agenda.
So I I did have a conversation um with two members of the pickleball community, and as you see, there was that little draft document that gave the current hours, the total hours, the tennis hours, total tennis hours, proposed hours, total expansion. So two of the issues that came up that I believe are legitimate issues are that the the summer heat makes it um difficult to for some folks to play. And so looking um expanding to some earlier hours and some more evening hours would probably serve um the folks well. The one thing, and I I think that I see Nancy's here. Hi, Nancy.
Hi.
So Nancy, I think, was kind enough to send that scheduling around so we could see um what's what the um rec schedule looks like for lessons and such. And I don't think, you know, obviously that doesn't impact this if if a schedule, something scheduled for five o'clock on a night when there's no pickleball anyway, you're just gonna go and do your programming. So it's it doesn't really impact that. So I don't know if Nancy first, you want to add anything?
That. Um, good evening, Mayor Council. Yes, I do, uh just a little bit, if you don't mind. Um, traditionally, the Parks and Recreation Department has not closed any of its recreational facilities unless, of course, there were safety concerns. Um, for example, in twenty twelve, Veterans Field, Maple Park and Graydon Pool were all closed due to the devastation of Hurricane Sandy. Um, even most recently during the COVID pandemic, we found a way to maintain a healthy environment and to keep our facilities open for recreational purposes for our Ridgewood residents. Most of the residents in our village community, regardless of age, participate daily in either active or passive activity throughout the day. And this is pretty much from sunup to sundown. Post-COVID, with our residents still either working or learning from home, they have come to appreciate the village open space and the need to be active and healthy. We have witnessed professionally a greater number of participants in all of our venues, whether it's programming, whether it's walking, facility use, et cetera. Um, today in the National Recreation and Parks Association magazine, they quoted that ninety-three percent of US adults say that recreation and parks professionals and their agencies are beneficial to their mental health. And with the top activities being number one, spending time in nature, number two, exercising, and number three, socialing with uh socializing with family and friends. Our department provides our residents with all of these important recreational aspects in life. With this information, I'd like to share with you that I do believe I would like for us to consider to re restore the pickleball court hours back to their um present, their post um state on a pilot program. We have been in this um pilot program another for the last three months. Concerns were presented um by some of our residents. Solutions were researched. We've remediated a lot of their concerns. Um, we've eliminated a hundred and seventy-three non-residents. We've installed acoustical panels. We've modified both equipment and supplies. And I think it's important for us to realize that the mature adult population deserves every opportunity to play, socialize and recreate, just like others do within our community. So again, I am open to working with you to restoring the air the hours of play. To the original hours that we originally start with before the closing of the courts and to work together to monitor the situation, to already enforce the guidelines we've already established and toward to work towards a um win-win situation. So that that's my thought. I'd like for us to consider a pilot program where we go back to the original hours of play and try it out for three months and and see if we have indeed remediated all of the concerns um better out there.
Can I just ask a question? Because I went I went back today, looked at some of the minutes. And on January twenty seventh, I mean, this is way back when, when we were first throwing around ideas and the ideas of possibly putting pickleball courts with paint, you know, nothing too expensive, get the portable nets. And that was on the January twenty seventh meeting, I think four of the five council members had said that, and then there was going to be a meeting the next day. And Heather said they'll they'll figure out which days and times they're going to be on what courts, and then they're going to notice people. And then that never happened. I mean, I guess because something happened at the meeting the next day where everybody came, I think there were pickleball people, residents, members of Parks and Rec, members of council. And I think it was decided that these hours were going to be sufficient, shall we say. Um, but then I thi- I I think that it was almost a not a misrepresentation, but I don't think many of the pickleball players knew what the pickleball players at these meetings or agreed what the pickleball players at these meetings were representing. Because almost immediately when we adopted the hour, the new hours based on everybody's input, we got complaints from the pickleball people saying, how did you do these hours? We would not have agreed to this. Um. So I don't want to go through this all again if we open it up, but I still believe, I think pickleball is a new and upcoming sport. I think people are learning it every day. More people are going to want to play it. And we really have to look for more options and opportunities. So is there a reason that we can't say take the Bel Air, take two of the Bel Air courts and paint them and have temporary, you you know, so you could still use them as tennis courts? Because that's what they do up in Wyckoff. They painted them so that you could have two pickleball courts on each tennis court, but it's just a portable net. And if you take the portable net off, you still have the the stripes, the lines for tennis. So you could play tennis or pickleball. Is there a reason we can't introduce that on one of the other courts in town to try and help? Give us more time, more hours for pickleball?
I I don't understand how that would it give us more hours. I I'm I'm not following you. I'm sorry.
Well, we could, I mean, we could, you know, I agree that the hours that we have right now are really not conducive to playing in the heat of the day. I think we need early morning hours. I think we need later hours. Um, I don't think it's necessarily fair to have early hours and late hours at the Glenn Courts. I'd like to see some other areas utilized. And let's say we take two courts at Bel Air and those are going to be four PM till eight PM courts. You know, and see, I I don't know. I'm just throwing something out there to see if we could get either early morning hours or later hours in a di- in a different location.
Nancy, have you seen what Wyckoff did with their tennis courts? Have you been there to to observe what they did? Yes. What they did, kind of brilliant. They just painted, it's like a a court within a court. And so you can put up your temporary pickleball net and you can play pickleball. You take the pickleball net away, you're on a tennis court. And so they just painted the line so that you knew where your pickleball was. Here's your tennis. And I think what Councilwoman Reynolds is suggesting, and I don't disagree, is that you know, what what we're looking at, I hear what you're saying. I hear what the pickleball community is saying. I hear what the folks are saying. But the thing is that we just had residents, again, reiterate the concerns that they had, and we have a new resident who just, I think that um our deputy clerk was kind enough to forward us the emails um at our last meeting. And it was a resident who just moved into a house who's saying, look, I I'm living here and and please don't extend these hours because it's already, it's burdensome. And I'm new here. And and he bought the house in probably in the fall, I guess, when when things had quieted down and and there wasn't much happening. So I I think that, you know, we did this and and in fairness to the village council, we did it based on, you know, a recommendation that comes from Parks and Rec. And we put these pickleball courts literally on somebody's property line. It's twenty feet from their backyard and and to suggest that you know, at eight AM on a Sunday morning, is that what time the hours would be, Nancy? It's to suggest eight AM every morning, seven days a week, that they should wake up to that. You know, it's interesting. I wrote down what you said. Um, beneficial to mental health. Beneficial to mental health, but I'm not quite certain how that helps the the folks that live right there and have subjected to that because I'm as concerned about their mental health because they can't go out in their backyards. They really can't, especially the folks right there. And I I think that that was, for me, a statement that resonated. So I had some ideas myself about how to work the morning and evening hours to make it more comfortable. Um, but I agree with Councilwoman Reynolds. I I I wonder why, if that's something that we you know, should be pursuing immediately, uh you know, to paint lines and get portable nets. Which would help. And and it does help because it helps because if you if people wanted to play, we would be able to just have different locations to play. We would shut one and and let the other location be for that day or maybe three days in a row and give the other people a break. And so it was kind of like the shared burden and shared benefit, I guess. I don't know. If anyone else has a thought, I that's my two cents. I'm hoping I'm not going to sneeze again, but um I I I mean, I I think Councilwoman Reynolds is right. I I think if we, and and I know that we talked about it, and I and I feel like the the topic got dropped somehow. Um, I I think we need to diversify the courts throughout the village. I think that pickleball is a sport that's going to continue to increase in um badge sales, because I think the more and more people that find out about it, you see it in the news all the time. It's it's literally all over. Um, it's going to increase. So if we are going to have a vibrant community, we should um have some other courts and diversify the um the use. So if if we can do that, I think that's something we should definitely look into. I'm sorry, I'm going to sneeze again, I think.
No, uh I I agree. I think it it's it's becoming more popular and it it makes sense to to look to have it in uh in other places. I think one of the the reasonings that somebody mentioned was that people could sub in and out and there's a camaraderie or a community feel to it and everything. Well, I mean, you could still, you you I don't see why you just need one location to do that. You could do that at any location that would be open. So it I don't I don't really, you know, the I don't I don't really kind of buy it that we can only have one pickleball court and that's it. Like, I think you could still have the same. If if you're going to have a place open for four or five hours or however long to to play pickleball, then you could just have the same kind of thing happen there, and people could sub in and out, and they could play pickleball and enjoy it. And you know, they could have other areas of the village to do it in. And so, you know, it could kind of just spread it around. If you have if it gets really popular, you could open up two places simultaneously. And then you really could increase your hours because now you have multiple places open at the same time that to get more people on. So uh it's I I, yeah, I think that's something that we should definitely have have looked into.
And people, I mean, it's not a bad thing. It's a fabulous, wonderful thing. So it's not terrible. I I mean, I guess, you know, we're fortunate that we have a vibrant community that wants to play and engage and be active. That's wonderful, but we also have to you know, be aware that this is imposing a a a burden to people that was unanticipated. And I know people say, oh, well, they move next to, you know, a school or playground or the basketball court or whatever. But you know, this this is very different than tennis. So I just had some hours. I don't know if everybody's good. Can I just, I I.
No, can I put in my two cents?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I am concerned um as as one caller put it, that there is a disparate impact on our older residents in the current configuration. Um, and and since it is Parks and Recs, that Parks and Rec that would be administering whatever program we go to next, my, I I would be leaning towards um deferring to Parks and Rec as to how, what they want to administer. So that's where I stand.
Yeah, I I I mean, you know, I I hear you and I, um, you know, I would love to be able to say that, but unfortunately, we're the ones, you know, it would, it actually would be the easiest thing for, I mean, for me personally, it would be very easy to just kind of push punt this over to somebody else and and not have people sending, you know, the the emails to say, stop this charade, or or you're discriminating against us, or you're doing this, or you're, you know, you're just you know, ignorant or all these things that are being said. It's it's certainly not pleasant to be on the receiving end of 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 those comments. However, I think that we have an obligation because when all is said and done, Parks and Rec came to us and we approved it. And we allowed it to be installed there twenty feet from somebody's kitchen window. So or thirty feet from someone's kitchen window. So let me just go through what I thought would be beneficial. Um, and this is based on the information that was provided. I I want to just comment to Councilwoman Reynolds' point about, you know, in individuals came forward as representative of the pickleball community, and you're absolutely right. And then we no sooner did what they asked us to do. We were still getting, then they said, well, they're not speaking for us and whatever, but this is what we have to go with. And I did, you know, I I did some outreach, so I'm I'm kind of not just listening to those folks. So I thought, like, right now on the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And where's Nancy? You're ten to five, right? So I thought, based on their recommendations, to extend those nine to seven. And that allows for those morning and a little bit of a cooler evening play.
Okay.
And then um and I I'm just saying this, this, these are just my personal notes, so anybody can jump in, feel free. I think the Monday and Friday off should remain just to give a little break. Um, Sunday, the current hours are eleven to four. Um, their recommendation was to go to eleven to six. I think that that also gives a little bit of a a cooler evening. And then Saturday, the current hours are ten to five. And I would just mimic the um Sunday and let it go to six. So I don't think I missed anything.
Could you just tell me again, Mayor, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday? Did you say nine to seven?
Yes, and that's what exactly what was requested. So the only, the only and and then Sunday is exactly what was requested.
I said eleven to six for Sunday.
I did, that's what they requested on their proposal. And then on Saturday, I they requested nine to seven, but I kind of felt, you know, there were other seven o'clock hours, so let's just make it the um ten to six, because it's right now is ten to five, so let's make it to ten to six. And 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 what I thought we could do is, because this increases the hours of play and it increases them into the evening hour, so that there's a little bit of cooler, a little, an hour earlier, maybe allows everyone to have a little bit more comfort. Um, and I thought what we should do is by resolution, and this way, if we wanted to modify, again, you know, we always have that, you know, ability to do it a little bit more quickly. If that's okay with Heather, the village manager.
I I just have to run it by Mr. Rogers, but I think, um, you know, maybe we can uh relax the enforcement and then do it by resolution, maybe, I don't know.
And then I just, like I said, those are just my notes, so feel free to jump in and give me your own thoughts if it's
Well, by resolution, you would relax the enforcement. Um, uh but you've got to give yourself a time period within which to consider adjusting the ordinance to make it, you know, make it work the way you want to do it.
So if this, if we give ourselves sixty days on this, does into July or
Yeah, that's, that's fine, we've, you know, relaxed it for more, you know, we've relaxed ordinance enforcement on other things much longer than that, so.
Okay, and I'm thinking that if we can do that until for um sixty days, and this way we can monitor it as well, and kind of get the feedback, and then we could always come back in, you know, six weeks. We don't have to wait the full amount, right? Does that make sense? But everybody can jump in, I'm not, I'm just, those were just my personal little notes.
So, I still don't want to drop the ball on trying to create more courts elsewhere. Is, what do you think about on the Mondays and Fridays that the Glen courts are closed? Maybe we open Bel Air for pickleball.
Right, so actually, Nancy, so what we, I think in Whitecoff, if I remember, I don't think the people were bringing their own nets, right? Were they bringing their own nets?
No. Some, a a couple, the really dedicated people brought their own nets, yes, in Whitecoff. But here, I think Monday and Friday, the, you know, the person Nancy that you hired can open the courts on Monday, leave the four, if we're gonna have four courts, you leave four nets. And then at the end of the day, they pick them up, or whatever hours we decide. I don't know if you're gonna do, you would do all day, but, I mean, I really think we have to look to the future, and I think there are gonna be more and more pickleball players. And I think we have to give them more options. And the expense of building new courts from scratch, I mean, that that would be ideal. Find a location that's not, that's not, you know, really close to anybody's house, it's just not happening. So
That's right.
Uh, in my opinion, Bel Air is the next best court that is further away from where, you know, a house is. Um, Somerville is, you know, their courts are right on the the border of people's properties, just like Glen, so I think that's out. Um, North Monroe, there's just no parking at North Monroe, that makes it difficult. So, I really, you know, I think Bel Air is the next obvious choice to try it. And it doesn't cost a whole lot to paint lines. And I can't imagine that the temporary, the portable nets are that expensive. Do you have any idea what the portable nets are, Nancy?
We had researched all of this originally, so I can have all of that information for you. Um, whenever you'd like, I don't, I don't remember it off the top of my head. Um, but the Monday and Friday, would they be the same, um, nine to seven? Would they be the same hours?
I I personally, if I was playing, I mean, I don't like the heat, I'm a type of person that literally, I melt in the heat. I get sick to my stomach, I throw up, the whole thing. So, to me, by nine o'clock, it's already too hot for me. And seven o'clock, it's still too hot. So, I think we have to give options, you know, at eight. Maybe not necessarily in the same day, but some people are gonna wanna play at eight in the morning, and some people are gonna wanna play from seven to eight at night. Because from six to seven, it's still, the sun is really hot from six to seven.
So, right, why don't we just try then, Nancy, if we can get those, because I think that if 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 the funding is there and we're all in agreement that, and I think that Councilwoman Walsh and Councilwoman Reynolds, and I think that we, I I think, I I think we'll all actually agree that diverse, having more courts and and diversifying and spreading that out is is better i- in the long run. So, if, what I would suggest is that to start on the if we go to Bel Air, because Bel Air is open for tennis, right?
Correct.
So if we can make those lines and make it that kind of, you know, um, um, two courts within a court within a court, then what we should do is, on, for Bel Air, why don't we go to the, um, because you can actually, anybody can go there and play technically anytime then, because it's eight to eight. So why don't we just do that as a, leave that, because then we can monitor that and see how it works, because we're not gonna go close up Bel Air now, we could just at least see how it works. Is that, that's Nancy?
Okay. When can we start? Next Monday?
With Bel Air?
Can you get it painted by then?
The, yeah, I could, the painting is not the concern, the nets would be the concern. Um, you know where we are with materials and supplies right now. Um, I I have to check on availability.
How about notifying the neighbors?
Yeah, I think we should send something out, just because we didn't do that the last time, and I think that that's important, that we
What are you saying, eight A M to eight P M, just Monday and Friday?
No, no, no.
Every day?
I think
Monday and Friday.
Right, but that would require somebody removing the per- the temporary nets.
Yeah, but how are people gonna play tennis there?
When you move the temporary nets, you can play tennis. It's, the tennis net stays there a hundred percent of the time. It's almost like the divider between the two courts, the two pickleball courts. And then you have the temporary net that gets put, you know, where it belongs when the lines are painted. I should, I mean, I can go to Whitecoff and take pictures of it, because they, it's exactly what they did. Um, and you can literally pick up the pickleball net, the temporary, and play tennis on that court.
So in other words, if the court's empty, like, people, people go and they, they'll go into the court to play tennis. But if they, they're just simply taking up the space, playing pickleball, one of those spaces instead of tennis. I mean, could you say pickleball at these courts only um, Monday and Friday? Sure, you could do that, but I think that right now, our our, our um effort should be to get the lines painted and secure the nets.
But if we're gonna do a resolution, I need to know what hours and what days, so I can put it in the resolution.
Okay, so we're talking about then for Bel Air?
Yes.
Okay, so I think for Bel Air, what we first want to do is at least, are we going to send a notification to the neighbors?
I wanna let them know the days and hours.
All right, so
Friday, eight to eight, I think that's what everyone's, Monday and Friday, eight to eight.
That's what I asked originally.
That's, that's what we're looking for.
And then Nancy, could somebody, I mean, you can have somebody bring the nets on Monday morning at eight and pick them up at eight. Or or is, does it make more sense to have two days back to back at Bel Air? So that, you know, just say Monday and Tuesday, drop the nets off at eight A M Monday morning, pick them up Tuesday night at eight P M? Or whatever days we decide?
It would, it would be easier staffing-wise, yes. If we did two days um back to back, but
Okay, so why don't we do this, Nancy? Monday, let's, let's
And then now, you know, Councilwoman Reynolds mentioned that nine A M is too hot. So should we change the hours at Glen to eight A M? Because, you know, she was the one who brought that up.
I'm basing the hours on what was recommended from the pickleball folks, so she, that's for her, she said personally, it doesn't work.
Okay, okay.
So, um, why don't we go um, will we, Glen closed on, on, Glen is closed Monday and Friday. Why don't we just leave, so we'll just, there'll be no pickleball on Friday then, so we'll go Monday and Tuesday or Thursday and Friday, which do you think is better? Thursday and Friday or Monday and Tuesday?
Monday and Tuesday.
Okay, so we'll do pickleball. Monday and Tuesday, eight to eight. Okay.
And then notice, how far out do you want? Two hundred feet, which would be typical?
Yeah.
And Nancy, uh, would the paint for the pickleball court be a different color than the lines for tennis?
It would have to be, yes.
Easy to recognize. Blue, like the, it's, it's just a different color, it's really vis- it's very visual, you can definitely see the difference in in the colors, the way it's set up.
Although the people in Whitecoff that we spoke to said they wished that the pickleball colors were more of a contrast than the tennis, like a brighter. Um, I think they were more muted, but
I have to, I have to research this some, because um I did speak with the um, because all of our courts were recently resurfaced, I have to find out what type of product that we can use on these. Um, he was absolutely dead set against tape. And he said that that would um terminate our warranty if we put any tape on the courts. Um, because the surface has not cured yet in some of the, our facilities, it's, it's not been a year. Um, so we need to be, I need to research what type of product we can use for this.
I mean, maybe call Whitecoff also, just to get an idea of what they use.
They haven't resurfaced their courts recently, I've been there. I I've been there twice, actually. I know what they've done. I've taken pictures of their courts, I've, I've been there, thank you.
So then Friday's the only day when there's no pickleball, correct?
Right. All right, so we're good?
Yeah, was everyone in agreement with the uh times for the Glen courts?
Okay, I wouldn't say I'm fully in agreement, but it's, it's a step in the right direction.
Okay, okay. I mean, look, for me personally, I I'm, I'm, you know, I I feel bad, and I I, in fairness, I think we all do, but I think
Particularly if, if there's no pickleball on Friday, on the other days, I'd I'd rather see it start at eight A M rather than nine A M.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm good with what we did, because that was the recommendations they made, and there was no pickle, there was nothing on those days anyway.
That's Saturday, right? Okay, moving on, yes? Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Um, so the next one is return of surety bond and cash guarantee. Um, and this is, um, we received a request from Ridgewood Dayton LLC to release the escort funds being held for one hundred dash one fifty-two South Broad Street. This includes twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seven dollars for the cash portion of a performance bond, twenty-five thousand dollars for a soil movement performance guarantee, and the release of the performance surety bond, since the work of the project is complete. Now it's my turn to sneeze. So, um, it's, it's just a resolution to release all that, the engineer has verified that the um work is complete.
Looks fine.
Okay. The last item is um a name, recognizing a change in name for our licensed site remedial licensed site remediation professional. Uh, Brinkerhoff is who we've hired to um deal with the um issues at the um Walnut Street Lot. Uh, North Walnut Street redevelopment area, I should say. Um, they're changing their name to Vanas Hengen Brussels Inc. Um, there, our project team will remain the same, and they'll operate still out of the Newark office. This new firm has a main office in Watertown, Massachusetts. So, we need to recognize the name change by resolution, so that our finance department can pay the bills submitted by the new company.
Want to make sure they get paid.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the next item, actually, there's one more item, which is the um next week's agenda. So, we do have one proclamation for B City USA and National Pollinator Week. Um, we have a public hearing for rigid water on amending the ordinance for the fees for the water service connection fees. We have resolutions for rigid water, awarding contract for Skoda server software configuration and license, or contract under state contract for twenty-twenty-two Ford F three fifty uh truck. Award contract under state contract for mini hydraulic excavator, or contract under cooperative purchasing program for a tow master T twenty trailer, awarding professional services contract for engineering services, repeat frost treatment at the Caron Limburg facility, and authorizing execution of an easement agreement for eight ninety-seven Best Court. We have introductions of um ordinances, which is amending chapter one forty-five for fees for daily parking permit fee, amending chapter two sixty-five vehicles and traffic, establish stop signs at Highland Avenue and Grandview Circle at McKinley Place. And um also repealing chapter one fifty-four flood damage prevention and adopting a new chapter one fifty-four flood plain management regulations. We have the public hearing on the tobacco, cannabis, and electronic vapor substance inhalation shops. Um, we have resolutions to award a contract for masonry repairs at ten fifty-seven Hillcrest Road. Award contract under state contract for twenty-twenty-two Ford F three fifty truck for Parks and Shade Tree. Awarding contract under state contract for twenty-twenty-one Ford Expedition for Parks and Recreation. Awarding contract under state contract for twenty-twenty-two Ford F three fifty truck for streets. Award contract under state contract, twenty-twenty-two F Ford F three fifty truck for fleet services. Awarding contract under cooperative purchasing program for air filter units for Village Hall. Awarding contract under cooperative purchasing program for a rubber tire front end loader for the water pollution control facility. Awarding contract under cooperative purchasing program for replacement vehicle lifts at lower garage for fleet services. Award contract under cooperative purchasing program for body worn cameras for the police department. Award contract under cooperative purchasing program for a plow, quad blade, and H D snow deflector for Parks and Shade Tree. Awarding contract under cooperative purchasing program for a mini sweeper for solid waste. Awarding contract under cooperative purchasing program for twenty-twenty-one Leach rear loader packer truck for recycling. Awarding contract under cooperative purchasing program for a plow for streets, and also a plow for fleet services. Awarding contract under cooperative purchasing program for single operator leafbacking truck for streets. Amending the pickleball um days and hours. And then um authorizing additional funding for United Way, special needs housing. authorizing release of performance surety bonds and cash portions of performance bond and soil movement performance guarantee for one hundred South Broad Street, one hundred dash one fifty-two South Broad Street. Recognizing the name change for the licensed site remediation professional, approving twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two renewals of liquor licenses. We have a, a lot of appointments, appointment of village attorney, village bond attorney, village labor attorney, professional planner, professional affordable housing planner, village prosecutor and assistant village prosecutor, municipal public defender and alternate municipal public defender, community development representative. We have award of a professional services contract for open space and recreation update. Award of the phone bid if we get concession by the current low bidder. Appoint representatives to Open Space Trust Regional Committee, board members to planning boards, zoning board of adjustment, Green Ridgewood, Ridgewood Green Team, Parks Recreation and Conservation Board, Ridgewood Community Center Advisory Board, Ridgewood Arts Council, Central Business District Advisory Committee, and village council members as liaisons to various boards and committees. That's all I have. So did, right now, I know I went through that quickly. You can let me know before Tuesday if you would, if you want any of those items off of the consent agenda.
And we just have to add the endorsement of the plan. Did you say that?
You're right, thank you.
Okay.
Have you formally announced the openings on the various boards and committees? And is that on the, on the website homepage?
It will be, yes. But some of these boards were reappointing people, so they won't be on there.
Right, okay. So we're good, everyone? All right, so with that, we're going back to public comment now to exceed five minutes per person. Who wants back?
First person is Lil. Please unmute.
Good evening, Lilian, name and address for the record.
Yes, Lilian Blood, two fifty North Maple Avenue. I'm part of the pickleball committee. I'm also part of a resident of this town. I am so disappointed in you of not allowing your professionals to do their job. Nancy gave you a program, a pilot program, that you could have tried for a month, see what works, but you didn't. You went back to hours that were given to you earlier in the season, way earlier in the season, because we didn't think that you would even open the courts for us. So we gave you limited hours so that we would get some court time. And now we're being subjected to those less hours. And I think Lorraine pointed out, it's hard to play in the hot, hot sun. And I think Lorraine also pointed out that it's nice to be able to play in the late evening. I do not know why you didn't allow us to have the same hours that you're now going to put Bel Air over at Glenn. You have four beautiful courts over there. If you go over there any afternoon, there's no one there. It's too hot to play. Many of the Ridgewood residents who have been playing pickleball for years have gone other places to play. They do not play in town any longer. They go play at, well, at Montvale, they go play in Oakland, they go play up in Whitehall. They play because they like the game. It is a fun game to play. I really wish that you would better consider what Nancy's proposal and just open it up, give it a month's time. If, if you have neighbors complaining besides Gail Howard and Judy Mack and Mr. Lee, let us know. You have all our names. I know several people who wrote letters to Donna and Heather that were not read tonight. I bet you have more than twelve letters that weren't read. I have no idea if everyone wrote the letters, but many of the letters I have personally heard were sent by four o'clock yesterday, Tuesday afternoon. They were not read. And that's all I have to say. I'm very sorry that you seem to take this role of, of denying people the opportunity to play and have fun that we were having there. And I wrote to many of you council people, I wrote to every one of you council people. I wrote to Heather, I wrote to Donna, I wrote to several other people just so that they would know what it is that we want. And you have professionals that you have hired to do the job, and yet you don't let them do it. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
All right, next call, next person is a caller ending in four oh seven four, please unmute.
Hi, it's Sherri Biskin, one seven eight McKinley Place. I'm going to try to be coherent, but I honestly am spluttering after the pickleball discussion. The saying that comes to my mind is nothing is impossible to the person who doesn't have to do it herself. And it is so clear to me that none of you play pickleball, have never played pickleball on the Ridgewood courts, and then played on the Wyckoff courts. For you to even compare those two as comparable playing experiences is ludicrous. And I will give you a number of reasons why, beginning with a safety issue. When you put a pickleball court on one half of a tennis court and the ball is hit deep into the pickleball court, as I back up to try to hit it, I am going against the tennis court and nearly flipping over backwards. If I do it on the other end of the pickleboard, pickleball court, I am backing right into the chain link fence. Now, true, I would rather back into the chain link fence than flip over headfirst over the tennis net, but neither is desirable. Secondly, each of you is clearly younger than I am, and I presume has better eyesight. But I can tell you that the pickleball lines at Wyckoff are not very visible. And it is difficult to know when a ball is in or out, where you're aiming to. You end up, you know, trying to get it just inside the line, except you aimed at the wrong line and therefore the ball is out. Thirdly, the nets are atrocious. They may have started out as regulation height, but they certainly do not remain at that. Weather affects them, the ability to, it's just a number of issues. They are nowhere near regulation height. So please do not think that by emulating Wyckoff, you are in any way accomplishing anything good for the pickleball community. That is number one. Number two is somehow in the conversation tonight, you actually took away a day of play at Glenn, which are superb courts. And I truly, I cannot imagine what you were thinking. I will give you the benefit of the doubt that it's late and this I'm sure is not the most important things on your minds. But seriously, this is all, all wrong. The priority should be to maximize play on the superb courts you have built at Glenn. And I agree with the previous caller who said that if Bel Air can be open eight to eight, why on earth can Glenn not be open two days a week, eight to eight? I'm looking at my notes to see if there are other things that I should be saying. Because I truly, I'm flabbergasted, to use an old time word. I don't see any other notes, so my bottom line is please, please, please do not proceed with this plan you have come up with this evening. It is all wrong. The priority needs to be maximizing play at Glenn. I understand the concerns of the neighbors, and if you want to take that into account, so be it. But clearly, eight to eight at Bel Air two days a week could be instead translated to eight to eight at Glenn. And secondly, please do not ever consider Wyckoff as a place to emulate and certainly do not consider it comparable to what we have at Glenn. So I hope you will take this all into consideration and revisit this because this is all wrong. And I do agree that you have paid professionals who have given you recommendations. And I also agree that it is a bit disingenuous to hide behind, well, I'm trying to do what the pickleball committee recommended. Because the pickleball committee has been forced into a negotiating position. Clearly, the primary goal and the desired goal is full equality with the tennis players. Let us play. Thank you very much. Good evening.
All right, next person is Scarpa, please unmute.
Want me to state my name again and address?
Name and address, please, Linda, thank you.
Scarpa, five six nine Northern Parkway. First of all, I disagree. The budget was not presented clearly. For example, it's a fact that Sally, the firefighters, didn't include insurance stipend or pension payments. And let's be honest here, several citizens did comment also on the budget not being presented in detail on your public meetings. I know you heard, because I did too. And it's take. An issue concerning safety, more taxes and less first responders was very clear and many of the village didn't support this as you saw the calls and emails come in. It is a fact, no clear rationale was given to the village to defund the EMT and hire the paid civil service firefighters with a four point three increase, but you voted and you did it anyway. The fact, these are the facts. A point of order was called on me because I used the village manager's name and the fire chief. I complied and stopped. The lawyer on this Zoom call stated point of order is called for callers who swear or disrupt meetings. I didn't do any of that, ever. I was clearly called out at the end of May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one meeting by name by the mayor because she disagreed with my statements that I had no feedback from her or this council, and named the prior mayor Aronson as being more communicative and transparent. And that's my opinion, okay? Everybody has their opinion, I have mine. She objected, saying she did call me and mention my Facebook posts. In this case, my name should have not been used and the council should have called point of order on the mayor. You all know this. I don't have to go over this. That's not being fair to me as a taxpayer. At no point in the past twelve public meetings I participated in, front and back end, did I see the mayor call out anyone else by name. Mayor plainly stated she spoke to me in March and May and May, March and May, and also last week on the twenty-seventh. And, and I agree, she did. At no time did she address my clear statements supported by Oprah documents or actual council statements. That's not answering my direct questions to prove to me a taxpayer out of that your plan was better to defund the EMT and hire two taxpayer funded fire people. It, it, a plan that would not hurt the community in safety, first responder and taxes. Personally, I think a hiring free should have been put in place, but that's my opinion and many of us share that thought. Lastly, the fact my name was called out by the mayor was a statement relying on antiquated Roberts ruling. Yes, I looked that up. However, in the Zoom call world, taxpayers see this as an unfair way to call out citizens prohibiting them from commenting, commenting. In this case, when my name was called out, it would have been fair to at last let me respond. Just how do you think taxpayers view this? Why do you see that it's not wrong? Why? This is why it's a freedom of speech and First Amendment violation, which I looked up. That is the bigger picture and wrong to do. A citizen should always be allowed to reply when their name is called out. Therefore, as a citizen, I want to make this clear. I do not give my permission to have my name called out in a public meeting unless it does, unless, unless I'm saying somebody's name, which is clearly written in your decorum, okay? If I swear or make a disruption, I get it. But if you disagree with what I'm saying, I do not give permission for my name from this moment forward to be used and I prefer to be labeled as citizen S, okay? I further do not give permission for any of my private communications to be recorded without my permission between any council member or mayor, okay? I look forward to your cooperation in this manner. That's all I have to say. I'm sticking up for my rights and I'm entitled to do so. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Rorick Hallaby is the next person, please unmute.
Yep, Rorick Hallaby, three seven four Evergreen Place. At first, I want to tell the two wonderful ladies who spoke so eloquently about their pickleball experience that in November twenty twenty-two, we will have an election. Now, remember the politicians who got us into this mess. And let's just absolutely sweep them out. This is one comment. My other comment concerns Attorney Rogers' vague answer to Councilperson's parents' very specific question. And frankly, the vague answer was troubling, if not surprising. I have lost touch of the number of times that Councilperson Knutson referred to me by name as spreading misinformation. Now, in my humble opinion, Councilperson Knutson wrote the book on spreading misinformation, yet I cannot hold her to account. To me, what is good for the goose is good for the gander. Certain of our town's politicians using decorum to silence people who disagree with them is an abuse of power. To me, a classic case of a corrupt government. Let me repeat, corrupt government. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next person is Andrew Verity. Please unmute.
Yeah, hi. Could you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Andy Verity, one eleven Sherwood Road.
You just need to speak up a little. I think people are having a hard time hearing you.
Well, I was the attorney that called in earlier about the discrimination concerns. And Mayor Kuzin, you, you made the remark that you and the town council never intended to discriminate against seniors regarding pickleball. And I totally agree with that, you know, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. But Mayor, I was very specific in stating in my prior comments that you don't need an intent to discriminate to raise concerns under law. Disparate impact discrimination means specifically that even without an intent to discriminate, if you adopt policies that have a disproportionate negative impact on a protected class of citizens, whether it be people with disabilities or, or old age or, or based on race or religion, you know, that's discrimination, that's blatant discrimination, even without the intent. So I just want you folks to really think about that and be aware of it because it's not going to go away, you know. I, I do appreciate you taking the time to address these issues and trying to extend the hours. But the bottom line is, is that from a pure discrimination legal standpoint, the, the only way this is going to be solved is that there has to be complete equity and parity between the much, much older pickleball players and the much, much younger tennis players. There cannot be any differences, there cannot be any days when pickleball is not played. Even more offensive, you know, the Glennwood courts are brand new, they're beautiful, they're pristine. They're the envy of, of, of every community in the area, and, and they're a gift. They're a gift to all Ridgewood residents. And yet, what you folks are trying to do is trying to shut it down even more and, and trying to disperse, you know, players and, and still, you, you're still trying to cut back hours and cut back days. And, and what really surprises me the most is that, you know, when, when the sound test idea came up and was raised, it just got so much enthusiasm, you know, it was just the people on the council, you, the mayor, the neighbors living next to, to the pickleball court said, yes, we need this professional sound test, we need it immediately. And so, what happens? The professional sound test takes place, and again, I'm saying it was a very professional sound test. It was, it was an expert in, in, in these types of tests, conducting the test. There were sixteen pickleball players playing. And the person conducting the test was well aware that somebody's kitchen was only twenty feet away and that person still conclusively stated there are no sound concerns, that this clearly meets all state sound requirements. But the funniest thing now is that, that this to me was a monumental event. I mean, this is just, wow. It's almost like all credibility of these neighbors and their complaints, you know, is totally taken away. But, but what really surprises me is that no council members, and, and neither you, Mayor, are, are even once raising. is that no council members and neither you, Mayor, are, are even once raising the sound test. Why not? It just doesn't make sense. And I guess the last thing I'd like to state is that, Mary, you, you'd placed a lot of emphasis on this one person moving into town and six months ago, and when this person moved into town, he was very well aware that he was moving next to a pickleball court, very well aware of it. I mean, it just didn't spring up on him. But it just seems to me it's just so far fetched that all these discrimination concerns exist. You're clearly disadvantaging senior citizens en masse. And yet you constantly refer to one person, one person moving in. And that seems to be the moving factor in, in all your decisions. I just, I just don't understand it. And again, you know, you kind of proved the fact that I live next to Willard and well, you know, you, you have to deal with sound, but it's not as bad as pickleball, the ping ping of pickleball, but that's absolutely not true. We have a playground that was just built a couple of months ago that is literally 10 feet away from somebody's home. And every day there's, there's dozens, if not hundreds of people playing with very loud noises. Again, 10 feet from this person's home. And you know what? This person does not complain because he acknowledged that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew. I'm sorry that time is up, but I, I hear you and, and just, just stay on the line a second. Okay?
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for, for hearing me out and have a good evening.
Okay. Next person is Diane Stetter. Please unmute.
Hi. Good evening. Diane Sider, 328 Van Enberg Avenue. Good evening. It's been a long night. I'm in total agreement with everybody else that has called with pickleball. I'm, I'm very upset, flabbergasted, shaking with some of the comments that have been made tonight. I'm really upset with you, Mayor Newton, after our meeting because one of the things that I definitely asked was why don't we go back and try the original hours? And that's what your expert in the field of 29 years, a veteran director of Clarkson Rex has asked for. That's what we always wanted from the beginning. The only reason why we've given you those hours that you, you keep saying we go back to, this is what the pickleball committee has suggested is because the courts were closed. So we were just giving you hours to get the courts open, thinking, you know, we're not going to ask for the moon. We're only going to get a little bit. So we're just getting like little crumbs along the way. We've always wanted to go back to the original hours and that's what Nancy asked for. And, and we all stand united in asking for those hours. I am a neighbor in the Glenn School area. Every day I come home from work and I'd like to go over there and play and I can't. Yet I do go over there and I see that soccer practice starts on the Glenn School field right behind Gail Howard's house. There are more than 30 people over there and that's just players. That's not the coaches. That's not the parents. On Sunday afternoons, you can even look in the record. I've been over there with reservations, teaching my children who were young adults to play pickleball. We've been playing from three o'clock to 4:00 PM on Sunday. And at four o'clock, everybody starts showing up to play soccer on that very field. You know, out of town people, they're parking on the street right along her house. They're filling up the parking lot. They're coming with dogs and grandchildren. They're setting up their lawn chairs right in her backyard. She's been out there, you know, working on her yard and everything. So how, you know, how does she get to, to say that we shouldn't play pickleball during those same hours? How do you get to say we can't play pickleball from four, you know, past four o'clock on Sunday when soccer is being played with the whistles, the clapping, the, the shouting? It's just, that is not fair. And it goes on every evening. I even had a conversation with Bernadette about, you know, the, the fields, how we're, we are lacking in fields because we can't use the fields over at Orchard. So the fields at Glenn School are being used more. I can hear the noise, but I'm not calling and complaining about that. I live on Van Enberg Avenue. I have to hear those trucks go by my bedroom window time and time again. But, you know, nothing really gets done about that either. There's certain things when you live in certain places in town where you expect that you have to put up with certain noise annoyances. The resident who just moved in there, he moved in well knowing that those pickleball courts were in his backyard. You don't move into a backyard with like 30 foot abrevieties and that doesn't, you know, put a little red flag in your, in your, in your head and say, hmm, I wonder why they're there. And then behind them, there are pickleball courts. I'm in total agreement with not pursuing the, the courts over in Whitecloth. As a tennis player, a very avid tennis player, having those lines on the court, it just completely screws up your game. It's very frustrating. And when you're playing pickleball, it's, it's the same thing. There's so many lines on the court. It's so confusing. And the safety issue is a nightmare. We've all, we, we've already had one person backing up who got hurt at the Glenn School because of the divider and the nets. And like we said, the senior citizens are over there more than anybody. And if they back up, then you're going to have, you know, a lawsuit on your hands. And I would hate to see any of my new senior friends get hurt tripping over a portable net. You know, they're not stationary. If they have to reach out and grab something, those nets at the Glenn School are, you know, they're rigid. You can grab onto them and help hold yourself up. Those portable nets collapse. They fall apart. Moving them in and out, tennis players have to move them because I don't think you can just say, oh, just pickleball can play here. Because if people want to play tennis, now you're discriminating against them going over there to play on the tennis courts. So they're going to have to move the nets. And if kids are involved, then the nets just don't hold up. So those are just a few of my things. I would, I would strongly listen to Nancy's recommendation and, and I don't think that we, you know, we really don't want to settle for, for the, for the hours that, that we proposed. We really want to go back to the full restoration.
Thank you.
Okay. Next person is Chloe Winograd. Please unmute.
Hi Chloe. Name and address for the record.
Clearly it's too late for her. Listen, I feel that this whole pickleball conversation has gotten completely out of control. And, you know, it just doesn't seem to be adhering to any type of reasonable discussion. I was calling to speak mostly because now you guys are talking about going over to Bel Air and I have, I've mentioned this twice, serious concerns about that because of where the Bel Air courts are related to Orchard School. Bernadette, remember many, many years ago when I was at Orchard School Safety Chair and we met, we have a massive congestion problem over there and bringing more cars will be problematic. The other problem that you have is that going back to the sound study, there has never been a sound study done without the nets, without the sound barriers. So now you're going to be moving it over to Bel Air and you don't even have a full impact of what you're moving because there are no sound absorption screens at the Bel Air tennis courts. There are neighbors there. There's an apartment complex and Bel Air has next to the creek other neighbors as well. So I think it's not a wise move, given the proximity of the school, the traffic generation and the fact that you're going to be generating even more noise than Glenn because you don't have the screens. Added to that, if you were to put the screens in place, it's just more money and you haven't even recouped your initial investment at Glenn School. And not to belabor a sore point, but spending is up and 4.3 is a lot for everybody. And I think we really should be being more pragmatic with the investments we have. I don't know how it got to be this way. I don't know why, you know, even in tonight's discussion, which got so overwhelmingly complicated that it did when you add up all the time, you actually took hours away from them, which is a shame. It doesn't address the fact that pickleball is the fastest growing sport in America and you're going to have to deal with some growth. And, you know, I don't want to use the word discriminatory, but it does look disparate and it reeks of ageism. Like I said at the beginning, our kids have all these parks and Ridgewood has been so great about promoting the parks for the kids. It's always about the kids. And the seniors want this. They're advocating for themselves and it seems incredibly uneven to say, you know, soccer from sunup to sundown and have these really kind of crazy hours. I mean, if you guys get the chance tomorrow, play back, there's no way a normal person could keep up with what you proposed. People are going to go to the wrong part of town and it's going to be all sorts of confusion. So I feel that eight to eight is reasonable with summer approaching. I feel that you haven't done due diligence at Bel Air and it's a problem with the school. And I think some, some type of reason needs to step in here because it's upsetting to watch these conversations. So good luck. If you need any help, I'm available. But I really don't think you can move it closer to a school, given all the traffic it's going to generate.
Thank you.
All right. Next person is Denise Lima. Please unmute.
Hi Denise. Name and address to the record.
Yes, Denise Lima, 319 East Glen Ave. Thank you, everybody, for staying up late. Few topics. A few meetings ago, I spoke about bus safety and gave some examples of issues with the buses. Then there was a conversation about moving the bus station across to the train station, which everybody, I think thankfully said, no, that's not something we wanted to adopt. But I don't see us talking about the safety on the buses again. This week, there was another encounter where in the morning, because there's no cars parked on East Ridgewood Ave, at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, the buses are going 45, 50 miles an hour and clearly over the yellow line because they can just go down because there's nobody parked there. So I would just ask that, I'm not sure who, but if somebody can bring that back and maybe it's the chief of police and just talk about what we're going to do about the bus. Has there been a study done? I continue to see empty buses. They're parked all over the place. They're coming in and out. I just, I think we need to get our arms around that. Secondly, I noticed that we're starting on the internet to continue to populate the project section. So thank you for doing that. For people that don't know about King's Pond or Hudson Garage, if we can add some type of status or was it implemented or a date or, or something, because some of these look like they might be new, people are questioning. So, you know, probably some low hanging fruit. If you could just add something to each one of those projects on where they're at in the process, that'll help everybody. Heather, thank you for mentioning the 210 trees. You didn't say in what timeframe. Is that year to date or in the month? So I'm just kind of curious. But kudos to everybody in, in doing that. I think it's, the canopy as well, will, will need it. I do see on the village website also under finance, there is a budget friendly version as well as the adopted version for 2021. I'm assuming those are updated and accurate if people want to go look at it. If that's not true, please correct me if I'm wrong. And I'm all about budget and spending. So I don't know why we need to spend over $200,000 for phones. I'm hoping it's a must have. I don't have the yellow sunshine binder. I don't have all the benefits, but I just can't imagine it. And if we're going to spend that much money, you know, technology, I've worked for Hewlett Packard for over 15 years. The useful life of a telephone is not five years. They're pushing the maintenance because they're making 40% margin on the maintenance. And that's something we should definitely not be going into. We should be asking any of these bidders to provide to us a subscription model for no more than three years. And we should also be looking at how we're incorporating telephone, Zoom, Jabber, texting, WebEx, you know, a more transformational approach to technology than just, I think, what's being proposed here. So I, I'm curious to understand more about what we're trying to do, but I would definitely carve out that five years. They're definitely trying to take us to the, to the coals. And I would also say, why aren't we leasing? On that subscription model, they should be offering you a lease in that instead of a capital buyout. So I ask you to look at alternatives. And last is, unless you want me to talk about pickleball. Last is the United Way Housing. And so we should not be giving any $25,000 unless they're giving a valid reason. Even coming to this meeting and asking for 25,000 without a reason is, is embarrassing. So nobody should be approving that until we get some details. And what are they doing to make, make it up and really providing greater details to us to prove that, you know, they're, they're trying to get to that shortfall. That shouldn't lay on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
All right. Next person is a caller, Andy in 4265. Please unmute. Hello?
Name and address to the record. Hi, this is Patty Deerhog, 519 Laurel Road.
Patty.
Hi, hi, hi. Sorry, guys. I know we've, I'm going to talk more about pickleball. I pretty much agree with all the calls of, you know, that we're just coming in about all the, everything everybody said about pickleball. As a community of pickleball players, yeah, we want, we wanted full restoration. We wanted everything back to eight eight. We've, we've given, we provided a compromise based on what, you know, what we thought would be a reasonable compromise. But what I wanted to clarify was, did, did we just lose a day at Glenn? Because I wanted to clarify this. I, I, I do not agree with moving the courts to Bel Air. I think that's a bad idea. But on top of that, are we, are we losing Tuesdays at Glenn? So we have Monday, Monday and Tuesday at Bel Air. I just didn't, I wasn't sure if that's what you're saying. So now we're talking about only Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, Glenn?
No, we didn't lose a day, but I don't usually do that. But I'm just being clear. I was going to comment it on the end, Patty. We're not losing a day. Somebody misheard it. That's all. I'm losing.
Okay. I know, I'm not, sorry, you're not supposed to reply. It's fine. No, thank you. So, okay. So we're still have the two, so we still have the same days. Is there, and I, I know Parks and Rec thought maybe we should do, I mean, if we're going to add, if we're going to add days at Bel Air, which like I said, I think is, is not ideal. Maybe you still go to the Monday, Friday, because we did, we did request the Friday back. I mean, the two days off is, is just a bit much. So I'd rather do the Monday, Friday at Bel Air or do the Monday, Tuesday at Bel Air and then give us the Friday back at Glenn. I, I appreciate the nine, the nine o'clock hour, the seven o'clock. That's great. I just think we need to possibly give us one of those more days back at Glenn. And I agreed with what one of the other callers said. It's, it's the double lines is, is very tricky for both sports. So I just, I know, I don't know why we're going back to that idea. I think we, we talked about that idea months ago. I thought we talked, you know, decided that that wasn't a good thing to do. And I just don't think that's the way to go. So, and that's all, that's all I wanted to say. Like I said, I just support everything everybody else said. We definitely wanted eight to eight. We're just trying to give, you know, trying to get the best we can possibly get in this situation to, to make everyone happy. Thank you.
Thanks Patty. Have a good night.
I have no others.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you. So we're going to close public comments and I'm just going to go very briefly. There was no cutting out of an additional hour, as I just said to Patty on pickleball. Somebody just misheard because we were kind of back and forth with the, the Glenn issue. You know, I, I do want to talk about that the claim of this being discrimination against any group. I think the parks are open to everyone. I take, I don't believe parks are intended just for children, just for the elderly, just for middle aged, just for, you know, parks are for everyone. But this issue or claim of discrimination, I believe I said, I don't believe we're discriminating against anyone. And certainly I, I don't, if I said intended, that was not my, I, I believe I said, I don't believe we're discriminating against anyone, but I do not believe that this is discrimination. And I'm just going to very quickly, before I move on, ask the village attorney to maybe weigh in on that, Matt?
Yeah, I'm not completely familiar with the demographics of those that are involved in the pickleball organizations that are affected by this. But all I can say is that there's a lot of variables that go into it. I disagree with Mr. Varity that this is discriminatory regulation. I've heard over the course of the time of the discussions on pickleball that, you know, it's, they got people of all ages playing together, which was one of the advantages of it. I've heard people on the phone and I can't guess their ages, but it just seems like there's many people from different ages. So it's not per se or effective discriminatory practices with regard to this. practices with regard to this. You know, nobody has an absolute right to the parks and the considerations that the council is making for the purposes of deciding when to use this happen to be with, possibly, you could argue that if you didn't, you'd be discriminating, if you didn't restrict the times or didn't change the times, you might be discriminating against people who might be elderly that want to enjoy the quality of life if they're home all the time. So it's hard to say. There's a lot of variables that go into it. I don't think you can come out with a blanket statement that it's a discriminatory practice without knowing all the factors, knowing all those different issues. And otherwise, there'd be an absolute right to it, which really doesn't work in public parks. So all those things in consider, and I would disagree with Mr. Farady.
And then, and I just want to point out that this, the recommendation, the proposed pickleball hours, I sent to Heather to distribute to village council members, probably a few days after I received it, we put it on an agenda. And I agree, I'm not going to disagree, that was a desire to have the full hours restored. But this is, this is a way of working and moving forward to allow everybody to enjoy the courts and play pickleball while also understanding the quality of life issues that have impacted on the earth. And finally, I'm just going to, have no choice but to comment on the claim that saying somebody's name, you see, we discuss people's names when they call into public comment, and the public comments I responded to, the last go-around, was because the individual calling in, and I won't use Citizen S.'s name, that individual demanded a response from the village council and stated unequivocally that no response was forthcoming. And I disagree. I did call, and I did email that I called, and we responded from the dais. And there is a response. And the response to the financial aspects of anything was that it wasn't about, it was a public safety issue. So just want to make it clear that, that if somebody, we see people call into public comment all the time, we use their names. I use Bob Dupin's name. I use Patty's name. We say hello. If you're going to call into public comment, there's nothing in that, that you're calling in and you're demanding a response, that was the response. So with that, we'll go, take a resolution to go into closed session. Thank you. Everybody have, oh, wait, one more thing. One more thing. I just want to thank everyone out there, all members of the public, council colleagues, village staff, everyone. We've had quite the year in COVID. We're going back to village hall. We're hoping and praying that as we move forward, everybody remains healthy, positive, and stays safe. But we just want to say thank you to all the members of the public who have been contributing. We've had a far more robust conversation than we've had in the past, and it's been appreciated. We hear people. We hear everyone. But it's been a long year, and we really just, I want to thank everybody, members of the public and council colleagues and village staff, because this has been a crazy ride. And we've come a long way since our very first Zoom meeting group. So fortunately. But thank you, everyone. Stay safe, be well. Okay, Donna, resolution to go into closed session.
Be resolved by the village council of the Village of Ridgewood that the village council meet in closed session on June 2, 2021, at 7:30 p.m., or soon thereafter, as the matter on the agenda can be reached and the said closed session be held via Zoom teleconferencing due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Be a further resolved that matters to be discussed in closed session are limited legal matters to include Town Garage and Pinchera versus Village of Ridgewood, and legal contract matters to include Hudson Street Garage Security. These matters are allowable under NJSA 10:4-12 at SEC. Be a further resolved that the minutes of this meeting shall be made available to the general public when such matters have been deemed completed by resolution of the village council. May I have a motion?
Oh, moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.
Good night.